Today is Monday, March 24th, 2014. Board of Selectmen's meeting, starting about one minute late, 6:01 or 6:02.
Sorry.
And the meeting is being audio and videotaped. And audiotaped here. And we'd like to say good evening to everyone tonight. We started to sign the normal payroll and vendor warrants. And I do want to allow anybody that wants to talk to the Board of Selectmen up front, before we have an executive session, it's gonna be a quick one. At least, we hope it's gonna be a quick one, then we'll be back. But right now, is there anybody who wants to talk to the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, I have one question. I was wondering if there was any determinations made, those are the information that I provided the board with.
Regarding...
The snow.
The snow.
The snow plowing.
And the snow plowing. Well, we saw your... I watched the video, the one that you sent. I saw two plows, but they were quite a bit apart from each other. They were right behind each other.
Well, the time was at the top.
And then you sent us an outline of how often they came.
Yep.
I don't find it myself, I don't find it out of line, because that's a main thoroughfare, where we have people going back and forth from both sides of town. And the trucks have to go and plow both sides of town. Look, so I mean...
I understand that, but...
I mean, we certainly mentioned it to Chuck.
My... Yeah, I know Chuck knows about it, because he hasn't waited that long in the early days before he sees me anymore. No, no, in other words, I'm just concerned, in other words, that you have a truck, and then you have another truck, which is behind it, which is plowing nothing, you know? That was my chain of thought, in other words, you know? It's like sweeping this... Having somebody sweep the street, and then, in other words, come back and do it over again, because, you know, you think there's still something there, you know? But, no, it's fine, in other words, you know? It's, you know... It's an expensive method of operation, there's no question about that.
Well, I don't think it happens on every street road. Certainly didn't hap... Doesn't happen on my road, but I don't have a main road either. And I don't know if it happens on any of the other selectmen's roads. However, most... I have... You're the only complaint that we've had about the fact that we're plowing too much.
I'm not saying we're plowing too much.
Everybody else is happy with the way the job is being done.
I'm not saying that it's plowing too much. It's the way it's being done. In other words, you have a truck go down, move the biggest part, and then you have a truck behind that, in other words, which is... Has nothing to push. And I think that visually showed it in the...
They weren't running back to back, like you see on a highway though?
No, no. One comes up the road... Well, no, they can't, because, you know, the road is only twenty, what, thirty feet wide, you know? And at some points, it's not even that wide. I mean, the trucks are individual. What I have visualized, what I have seen and heard, in other words, coming by, in other words, is a truck coming by, and the first one, in other words, moves the snow, and the second one is behind it, maybe a few minutes behind it, or short ways behind it, and, in other words, moves nothing, you know? That is my opinion, okay? In other words, my viewpoint, and...
What would be your... In other words, what would be your suggestion on how we should do it? I mean, seriously, I mean, how would you want us to do it?
It's not a question of wanting how to do it. The clearing of the road is nice, okay? It's just that I see the truck, in other words, coming and doing nothing, you know? And we're paying that truck sixty-five dollars an hour, in other words, for doing...
Fifty-eight.
Oh, fifty-eight. Well, in other words, according to the schedule, in other words, you know?
It was paid a width of the plow.
What's that?
It was paid a width of the plow.
Oh, yeah, well, the schedule that I received from the town, in other words, you know, that was the prices that I see, you know? But anyhow, in other words, I have no suggestion, in other words, I'm just inquisitive to why, for years, in other words, it was one truck that came up the road, and it was adequate. The roads were finally, you know, they were nicely done and passable. Now we have two trucks coming, and it's still nicely done, but the second truck does nothing.
But I can't say for sure that they were... First of all, neither one were town trucks. They were rented trucks, you know, contracted trucks, both of those trucks. And we're not sure that both trucks were contracted by the town. It could be a fellow going down the road with his plow down that was plowing private driveways. Now, you showed us pictures of one storm, Joe. Did you have pictures of all the storms too? Were they doing it on every storm?
Yeah.
Every storm? Because I know you video everything that goes by your house.
I mean, there's a breakdown here, in other words, you know, of these trucks coming by. These are town trucks. I have it on video, that these are town vehicles, yeah? It comes in... I have the license plate numbers, in other words, I have a camera that takes just the pictures of the license plates.
Joe, what do you want us to do? Tell them not to send the trucks down the road?
No, in other words, use some different approach, in other words, on the plowing. In other words, instead of having two trucks, if the storm requires it, fine, but the truck is out there with water, with snow and water on the ground, an inch thick, and plowing that, in other words, I was on it.
They were pushing slush right on.
That's the only...
He has some comments.
I was just gonna say what the chair said. I talked to the Highway Surveyor, and he confirmed exactly what you saw in your video. The second truck was pushing water and slush off the road, which, given the sharp temperature drops we've had after our storms, is an appropriate method of dealing with a storm event. This may or may not be the way the Highway Surveyor deals with every storm.
But, you know, the breakdown that I sent, in other words, you know, four minutes apart, in other words, more or less, in other words, for an hour, okay? And, I mean, it isn't something that I'm visualizing, in other words, it's documented. In other words, it's there on tape, on camera, yeah?
I understand, Joe, but...
And they're all town trucks.
Trucks that are going to East... Well, the one that we saw, they were not... The one that you had on the video that you gave us did not have town trucks.
That one with the one headlight isn't a town truck?
I can't remember. It was on the CD, that was about a month ago, okay? But what I'm saying to you, Joe, is the trucks have to pass... If they're gonna go down to East Free Town, if they're gonna go down on this end of town, do you want them to run with their plows up?
No, no, in other words, I'm just stating, in other words, what I have seen. In other words, these are town vehicles, town trucks, which come up and down the road. Their plows are down, okay? They're plowing, in other words, they're not a vehicle... Because that truck comes back fifteen minutes later. In other words, goes up, and then comes back, okay? Fifteen minutes later. The same vehicle, okay?
Right, probably because it goes up one side and then back down the other.
That's right, but...
But for a reason.
I know for a reason, but, in other words, in a lot of cases, in other words, there's two trucks. This is the thing that I'm an objective of. There's the second truck, in other words, that is consequently doing nothing, yeah? That's just my opinion, okay?
All right, sure. Go ahead.
So, you know...
Mr. Montreux, let me... We... You came to a problem. We approached through the town administrator, the Highway Surveyor, and his answer to us was, the first pass pushes the snow, gets rid of the snow. The second pass behind gets rid of the slush. You also have to remember that Chase Road is a main thoroughfare in the town. And a lot of the ambulances, police officers, this road really needs to be taken care of. So, that, I mean, having those two passes by those trucks is why that's done. Unfortunately, you live on Chase Road, and you see it. It doesn't happen in my neighborhood, it really doesn't. It doesn't even happen on Chipaway Road. But because Chase Road... Because it goes all the way, so it happens on Chase Road. I mean, that's his answer to us. I can't... That's why we hired him. We hired him because... Or we voted for him because he's the one that does the job. We approached him, he answered the question, and that's where we are.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know what I mean? You wanted an answer, and that was the answer. I can't second guess him, because that's what he's...
No, I mean...
I was gonna make this comment, Joe.
What's that?
Just this comment. Mr. McCumber, we got a lot of compliments on how good the roads are in Free Town. He's also an elected official. We can say, we can suggest things to Mr. McCumber until the cows come home. But the fact of the matter is, myself, I think he's doing a good job keeping the roads clean, and I don't have a better idea. If he was to push away from his desk and say, "Okay, Lee, you manage it," I couldn't do it, Joe.
I don't have a better idea either. I'm just questioning, in other words, the why there's one truck behind the other truck.
I can tell you this, there's two selectmen living on Dr. Ridley Road. There's only one truck by our house from time to time, so...
I'm well versed, in other words, on, you know, because I get around conservatively. And I, you know, see a lot of things going on, and, you know, this is one that really brings to my attention, because Mr. McCumber gets there and says, "I'm running out of money." In other words, you know, you suggested the other day to him, in other words, you know, he said, "Well, I raised the budget to four hundred thousand, but we can't bring it back down." Okay? This is what at the meeting, in other words, of the Finance Committee, you know?
That's true.
And like somebody asked me, in other words, "Well, why can't you bring it back down?" In other words, if you've raised it, you know, one year. In other words, you know, you appropriate X amount of dollars, in other words, and... Definitely, you can't predict what the weather's gonna be, but, you know, I think you can use good judgment, in other words, to say, in other words, that, you know, "Well, we already got two inches out there, in other words, right now, in other words, you know, let's wait until there's three inches, in other words, to send the trucks out," you know? But trucks start rolling one inch, a half inch on the ground. When the sand truck comes by, that's fine, that's a good thing, that's the first thing that comes by. Then, in other words, it's a constant, in other words, you know, plows coming by. So, and every one of these have a plow down, and every one of them, in other words, is a town... They're... Half of them are town registered vehicles, yeah? And, you know, I find there's really no criteria either, by the Highway Department, in other words, to hire these vehicles. He has no request, in other words, for license, what their licenses are, what their insurance coverages are.
It's not correct.
It's not correct at all.
They have to, they have to have proof.
The application that was submitted to me had nothing on it, nothing of that sort.
Did you file an application, Joe?
Oh, I asked for an application, I received an application. I received the application to review it, to see what was on it.
Yeah, but did you ask specifically if they're required to have insurance? Because you're not gonna ask that until you get an application back to see who the heck you're interested in, and then if you're gonna hire them, and at that point, you're gonna ask those questions.
But there is no other application.
It has to be on file, and it is on file with the town accountant. She goes over all the contracts, so it is on file.
There's a request for proposals. The individuals respond, they're required to show proof of insurance. They show proof of workers' compensation insurance. It's done properly.
Well, I had requested that, and I didn't receive that.
Yeah, it has to.
I think you probably received specifically what you asked for,
Just a generic.
and not the entire process.
Also, as far as the amount for snow plowing, we allocate... The town allocates a hundred thousand dollars a year for snow plowing.
Right.
It's in a separate budget line item, okay? You can only use it for clearing snow. Every year, it's a hundred thousand. This year, it's costing us about...
Two hundred and fifty thousand, I think.
Or a little bit more than that.
Yeah, I mean, it's under...
He's not gonna get that in the next... We're gonna be... We're working on the next year's budget. He's gonna get a hundred thousand again.
Right.
Right, he comes up with the recap.
That's why I asked him, in other words, why, in other words, he said, "Well, I could raise it to four hundred thousand, but then that's what it's gonna be every year."
Right, because once you re... Because the snow plow is a different entity altogether, once you raise that amount of money, you can't go back down, it has to stay at that level. Because it's one of the budget items that can be raised on the recap sheet, and I know I'm getting technical, but whatever we go over, the hundred thousand, it gets raised on the recap sheet for us for the following year. That's why you don't wanna raise that, you wanna keep it where it is.
Okay, no, I'm satisfied, in other words, you give me an answer, that's what I want. I didn't want a big discussion.
No, all right.
There's very, very few budget items that you can legally overexpend, and snow plowing is one of them, as they allow you to do that. And that's because you never know what's gonna happen.
Okay, very good.
Anybody else wanna talk to the board?
You want us to talk, or do you want to wait till you...
We have you on the agenda. Let us...
Yeah, you're on the agenda.
So, we'll take you out of water, so you guys don't have to hang around, okay?
Okay.
All right, how's that? All right, the next thing is, we have an item here on the agenda.
Why don't we go through this agenda, and then we'll do that? Because they're all here.
All right.
How do you take them, last?
This is a good idea, we'll hold off on the executive session, and we'll go right to the discussion of the town's Fourth of July parade.
All right, my question is, many years ago, this is when they had a bonfire at the school, that's how far back it goes, and that was your Fourth of July.
Was that, just for me, Clarence, was that ten, fifteen years ago, five years ago?
Twenty years ago.
Twenty years ago, okay.
One side of town, East Free Town, had the parade. A sonnet had the parade the following year. The next year, they came to East Free Town. This rotated back and forth every year, until the bridge on Gurnee Road was under construction. We could no longer take the weight to have the parade go by there. And since then, it's never came back to East Free Town. I was wondering if they would consider rotating towns, because we do have a mall over there, and we have businesses over there. We have, I counted eleven stores in that mall, that the parade would benefit. Where in the sonnet, you have no only benefit in that point, yeah? That's the only problem I have.
We don't mind the fireworks and the park the night before. You can keep that over there, because we would like the parade. You can keep the noise in the parking and all that. I'd be nice...
I'm sorry, Gertrude, but that was funny.
But it was just that the pride is in the town, and we don't have that anymore. We all have to go to a sonnet. Excuse me, a sonnet. They're still behind me, they might hit me.
They're shaking their head no, so you're in good shape.
No, I mean, they can keep the... You know, but we used to take our pride on this side. So, we would just like to have our parade back.
Yeah, and the reason why it stopped being switched was the first time the Gurnee Road Bridge failed. It was closed for a good number of years, and then they put a plane across, they opened it up, and it never came back at that point.
Couldn't take the weight.
And now, it closed again, but now we're open for business.
Yeah.
So, I guess...
Well, we don't have... I thought it was a good idea, all of us, because we've each heard your concerns. So, I thought it was good that... And we all thought it was a good idea for you guys to come in and, you know, say on camera and ask the Parade and Fireworks Board Committee why they don't consider coming back on this side of town, and why they stopped.
Well, they know why they stopped, and we've been patient in waiting, and now we would like to have our section.
Does anybody from the Parade and Fireworks have a comment?
Nobody was invited.
Well, John...
Well, we just... We do have some comments, if you'd like...
That's fine. We wanted to... I think it's important to iron out...
Yeah, definitely.
You know, so... Do you... Bob?
All right, these comments are shared by the entire committee, there's no objection to... And I took some notes after the meeting. The Asana route is a right topography in length. It has become something of a tradition. Numerous iterations on the East Free Town side have not been as successful, and some areas offer poor spectator viewing, little shade, and difficult traffic management. The 2014 participants have already been notified of the Asana route. The Asana has been vetted through fire and police on numerous occasions, and provides a safer, more convenient drop-off and pickup of young and senior parade participants. The Asana offers lots of parking at the ball field. That's the one over on Narrows Road. A good congregation area for children, and easy lineup on Copacoot Road. Ongoing good relationship with Stop and Shop about truck traffic. No overhead wires where it ends, since there's an East Free Town floats coming in contact with power lines.
When?
Years past.
Years past, I've been in the parades.
All right, let me just finish.
Okay.
The new roundabout adds a new dimension of complexity in terms of route determination, especially with large trucks. We see large trucks in that parade. And if you wanna bring up the Gurnee Road thing, what's the weight limit on Gurnee Road, the bridge?
Now, it's seven thousand pounds.
The parade doesn't go on the Gurnee Road.
It's as strong as the one in the sonnet, or is it ten thousand?
It never went on Gurnee Road?
No.
The parade never went on that. It was more for traffic concerns.
Before the bridge?
No, it was more about traffic.
You used to go to County Road.
You go to County Road and take a left. You go down to the VFW.
Before that, we had the Gurnee Road, because we had that big wheel, we couldn't get it through the bridge. We had to back it off.
That was beautiful in my time.
Well, certainly, this isn't something you're talking about for this current...
No, no.
2014's already been laid out.
It's capable now.
No, we wouldn't mess up that.
But is this something in the future that the Parade and Fireworks Committee would consider?
We've talked about it in the past, and we've found that... There's one town, only one town, or Free Town.
Thank you, thank you.
So, anyway, the route down in the Asana section of town is pretty straightforward and easy. There's a good detour. And the problem we have on County Road, there's no detour, because you have to stop traffic, and where do they go? I wasn't on the committee when it was in East Free Town, so I'm not sure what happened. And also, another little complexity, County Road, Route 18, the state highway, you just can't shut the state highway down without getting the permit and things from the state. So, that's another complexity you have to deal with.
County Road?
County Road, yeah, yeah. And Route 18, too.
You know, we've had various routes over there, it doesn't have to be County Road.
Yeah, I, you know, I wasn't... We were on the committee back then, so I'm not sure what the routes were.
I've been since the beginning of time.
Yeah, I believe it.
Isn't 79 a state road also?
No. It's a state numbered route, but it's not a state highway.
We've had the parade come down County Road, go down by Gurnee Road,
I always...
ending up at the mall.
Yeah.
And we've had to go down, straight down, Down Mason Road to the VFW.
Yep.
And they had the ceremony at the VFW.
We talked about it at length, the old D is trying to figure out the best route to... Hey, we even thought about, hey, why not Bullock Road right now, you know? Could be a lot of different...
I think something could be done.
But it's, right now, the way we're looking at it, as Bob talked about, there are neat, easy places to drop off and pick up people. It's a good route, and it's a good detour, because of any through traffic. You just got on Route 24, and you have the two exits, about eight, nine, you can get nine, ten, you can get off and on, and go around the parade.
Well, if you can get off and on, Gurnee Road and Howland. Then you get County Road, and you get Mason Road.
I just think it's something should be looked at. You gotta take into traffic, safety, fire, and also, we got a lot of vehicles to line up. We're talking big trucks, we're talking fire trucks and other stuff.
Well, we had them here.
Where did it start?
We had them here before.
It was in East Free Town, where did it start from?
We started at the point one year.
And come up 18?
Came down County Road.
Come down County Road, okay.
Up Gurnee Road, come around to the ball field, and ended there, at the fire station.
So, you lined up down at the...
Yeah, we've had various routes.
See, they started all off...
We had like Gurnee Road down, too, they lined it up, Trail Road.
We started at the mall there, on Chase Road, and gone up Gurnee Road, and up Howland Road, back onto County Road, and end up at the fire station there at the ball field.
Well, do you think... Do you think, like, before the next year's plan, that anybody that's concerned from East Free Town could at least sit down and talk with the...
Oh, sure, of course. There are obviously, like, selectmen's meetings, our meetings are open to the public, so anyone could come at any time, they're posted. So, we welcome people to come to the meetings, offer any thoughts or suggestions or ideas. We're looking for people to help with the parades and the fireworks in general all the time.
And we also have the roundabout.
Yeah, I would probably wanna stay away from the roundabout. I didn't know if you could go from the mall, straight down to the ballparks in Free Town Elementary, and just do that route. That's... It's short, but I don't know.
Chase Road all the way.
Yeah, and just straight route.
Another thing that we'd like, too, is that play for the spectator crowd.
Right, I know.
And we marched in... My wife and I have marched in hundreds and hundreds of parades. And you want spectators.
Right.
And from what I hear, anecdotaly, that when the parades were in East Free Town section, wherever they were, you didn't quite get the turnout that you did down in the Asana section of town. So, that's something to think about.
It's...
I have one thing to ask you. Now, you mentioned the accessibility, in other words, of these four corners and all that there. Now, I always participated in the parades at one time, I marched in them, and we always used to go and see them. My wife was associated with the Girl Scouts, she, you know... I, in turn, in other words, am no longer able to go down there at night, in other words, because of the simple fact that the park, in other words, on Elm Street, you can't, you know, you can't get down there, in other words, you know? You have one way up, I believe, and then Locust going across from, next to the railroad tracks there, that street there, you know, it's just too far, in other words, to walk, you know, and...
You're talking about the fireworks, not the parade, correct?
Well, even the parade, in other words, the...
Because the parade's obviously in the daytime.
Yeah, the park, in other words, for the parade is also very limited, in other words, you know? Because of the one ways and the no parking on, I believe, Elm Street, in other words, like, from 79 upwards, in other words, there's no parking, isn't there, Paul?
There's a section.
There's a section that's blocked, yeah. But, yeah, in other words, you know, we just don't go down anymore, because it's too far to walk, you know? When you get older, in other words, you know, it gets tougher. So, yeah, it, you know, I'm just, you know, commenting on your comment of the accessibility, you know? I don't find it that accessible, in other words, you know? Especially for the fireworks, in other words, the fireworks, you know? To be able to find someplace to park, and then walk, in other words, you know? You know, you're up past the Historical Society, you're up by the... And, you know, you can sit down and watch it. I watch them on television. Okay, I don't wanna take up the time.
It's okay, you know?
Anyway, what we're asking for is some consideration, give it some thought. And, you know, you're the committee, you decide where it's going, and we're willing to cooperate, but we just wanted to spark your attention. It may have been proud to you people when we alternated each end of the...
I remember talking to the folks about that, yeah.
You can make a merry-go-round in the roundabout.
So, this wasn't to bypass the Parade and Fireworks. We just wanted to hear from the folks, and then we're gonna compile, have our town administrator compile a letter and send it off to you. But since I saw a lot of you guys here, and through Paul, I thought it would be better, maybe just address it at this time.
I don't mind the... We don't mind, you know, giving the fireworks and stuff in the park the night before. Though I still would like some representation for us people to get a share of the... The money comes out of that.
But see, I think the park and the fireworks and everything, and the parade is associated with one another, that's... I think that's... It kinda melts together, I think, you know? It's difficult to take one and leave the other. That's just my thoughts, yeah?
We appreciate your sentiments, because a good number of the people on the committee also live in East Free Town, so it's not as though it's one half a town versus the other. We consider it one town, and we look at what the best place, the best place for our period, regardless of where it was.
I think it would be hard to separate, in other words, one function from the other, you know? I just think it would be difficult, because, you know, they're associated, the fireworks and the parade and everything, that's all associated together.
But it was before.
Yeah, no.
Still did it before.
Right, oh, yeah.
You still had our parade on our side of the town.
But I think there might have been some suffering in between the two functions.
Let me ask you...
It was to tie the town together.
When you start preparing for the parade for 2015, when... What's the time that you usually have your first meeting?
July 5th.
Every July, yeah. They're still recovering from the war.
They're not responsible for July 5th.
Our next meeting?
No, our first meeting of the year after Fourth of July, I'm trying to think of the rest.
When you stop planning the next parade?
Yeah, we're really on, really on.
Yeah, it's early. We're burning now.
More exacting co-pays than what our employees were used to.
Okay.
The, in a few, oh, I sent a board a memo about this a while ago, and we opted to wait to discuss this until the renewal time. But the essence of this is, what we determined is that the average employee, the average retiree, if they have six or eight prescription drugs, could be paying more under the new plan than they were paying right now because they were going from two-dollar co-pays to percentage co-pays.
Okay.
So, this was an attempt to do two things. One is to bring down the total cost of the plan, which is, will save the town ultimately ninety-five thousand dollars, even with the split that's outlined here.
Okay.
And to take advantage of what is a better managed and federally subsidized prescription drug plan.
Okay. So, this is to save the town approximately ninety-five thousand, but not to alter, in a detrimental way, anything for the retirees, correct?
Well, what we've done is, the way it worked initially is all the savings came to the town.
But, but we're not hurting, we're not hurting the retirees. They're getting the same, only, or better plan.
They are getting a better plan.
Okay, that's all I needed to hear.
There could be a retire, there could be some retirees who make out much better under this plan. And there could be a retiree, depending upon what types of prescriptions they have, and whether they're, where they are in the formulary, that might be adversely impacted.
Okay.
But we think this was a pretty creative way of resolving the issues.
Okay, okay. I made the motion.
Any other questions?
I second it.
Okay, okay, motion made and seconded to adopt the recommendation of the Insurance Advisory Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone oppose? Unanimous. Okay, that's approved. Next thing on the agenda, as I scroll back here to my... Is the ambulance abatement. You're hereby notified that the ambulance abatement fees for the month of February two thousand and fourteen is to be made, and the amount is thirty-two thousand, four ninety-eight, seventy-seven.
Make a motion to approve February two thousand and fourteen abatement.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. All right, next thing is the approval and the signing of the annual Patriot Half Triathlon.
No, thank you.
No, that's not on, no, that's skipped, that's going to, that's, it was a mistype. It's supposed to go to personnel.
Personnel.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
It was a mistype. See that? I did that at home. Okay, approve and sign the annual Patriot Half Triathlon for June fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen, Route one oh five and Route eighteen. Also approve a donation from Sun Multi Sports to the town. Actually, what was the amount of that donation?
Five hundred.
Five hundred? Okay.
It says, "We appreciate the opportunity to host this event in East Free Town, and as a sign of our appreciation, we would like to once again donate an annual donation to the community. Please find the enclosed check for five hundred dollars made up to the town of East Free Town, or the town of Free Town."
So, does that mean we keep it?
Right, East Free Town, give some money, cha-ching!
So, this, this race is an annual event. It has been reviewed, the...
In depth.
By Chief of Police, by the Fire Chief, by the Highway Surveyor. They've all signed off on it, and they're just waiting for the Board of Selectmen to sign off on it. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
Again, we just have to make sure that they go around later, pick up all the trash, and et cetera, et cetera. Otherwise, we will...
Hear about it.
Yeah, we will not only hear, but we have to impose a fine or something.
Yeah, I think last year, the resolve was better than the prior year.
Okay.
I think this group here has, they have vans that haul them and pick up. All right, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next on the agenda is the approval and signing of the Sunday Entertainment License for Sunday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen, for the St. John Newman Lakeside Festival. This is an annual event that's going on for many, many years. Any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
With discussion.
With discussion.
Will you poke him and wake him up? Okay, what's the discussion?
Waiting for her to say it. With discussion.
Wait, did the building inspector?
No, the building inspector has to go there and inspect the lines.
Okay, I just want to make sure that she knows, she knows that, all right.
And this is, actually, this event uses police officers there the whole three days.
Right.
All right.
What, why does it, does it usually just say one day?
No, no, it's only for Sunday.
Only for Sunday, they only need it for Sunday.
They do it, it's, it starts Friday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. But Sunday, they need the permit for the entertainment.
Okay. I don't remember that. Okay.
All right, you want to, if you all say any discussion? I know, should I call for the vote?
Go ahead.
All right.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Would you poke him?
All right, the next thing on the agenda is, in the hands of Mr. Brown.
We have been notified by Serpent, Regional Economic Development District, that we are eligible to receive one thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents worth of bicycle racks. It's part of a program to encourage recreational activity. The requirement is that they be put on public property. I thought this would be a great addition to our parks and ballfields. Put as many bike racks as we can until we spend the money. The requirement is that we would have to assemble them, and they are basically, pretty much put together to begin with, and just pay to have it shipped.
Sounds good. Do you know what parks are going to put them in?
I was going to ask the board's suggestions, but I was thinking that down at Hathaway Park and at the ball field.
Yeah, definitely at the ball field. Yeah, that, I mean...
It's fine with me. Hathaway Park and the ball field would be fine.
How many racks altogether?
I don't know until we...
All right, we can start off with that, and then...
I'll let you know how that's going.
Yeah, all right.
And when they come in, you'll have to get the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee to put it together?
No, we have to get you to chain your bikes to them.
Oh, okay.
Oh, God, that would be a sight.
Why do you, are you insinuating that the two oldest selectmen can't ride a bike?
I didn't say a thing. I didn't say it.
Haven't you ever seen a four-wheeled bike?
This year, you're gonna, I know you don't walk the parade, okay? I didn't even bring that up because they would have all been...
What are you doing now? You bringing that up?
But maybe you should ride a bike during the parade instead of...
Motorcycle, training wheels?
Put like a little flag on the back for you.
Motorcycle, training wheels.
Maybe a little red nose. There you go. And a hat.
Yeah, a little curly orange hair.
Does anybody want, does anybody want to make a motion to go along with this?
Make a motion that we participate in the Serpent Bike...
Serpent?
Bicycle Parking Program.
And how are we going to fund this?
I have money.
Okay, there you go. Motion made and seconded?
We have money.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. That takes care of that. Approval of the Board of Selectmen's meetings, November twenty-fifth and December second.
Motion that we approve, the minutes is read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's done. The other one we already did. Unemployment Compensation Service Agreement. That we have to have some discussion on because I don't know anything about it. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, the Treasurer Collector and I met with a vendor who suggested that we would be better served by having the private sector monitor our unemployment compensation. We budget about thirty, twenty or thirty thousand a year for unemployment compensation. As we found out recently, some of the claims that come before us have absolutely nothing to do with us, but are simply there because someone was an employee here at one time or another. The state has revamped their system. It is virtually impossible for persons who are not familiar with it, and intimately familiar with it, to navigate and understand. The company will monitor our filings, they'll monitor our requests for payments. They will also go to hearings when we contest it. Based on a possible exposure of, you know, in the twenty thousand range, I think four hundred and ten dollars for an annual contract is a, is a good investment.
That's per quarter.
Per quarter, I'm sorry. Sixteen hundred dollars. The, you know, if we eliminate just a couple of claims in a couple of weeks, on a couple of claims, we recover this money. This will give us a chance to evaluate it, find out if they're effective. They have been effective in other communities, albeit they're larger than we are. But, you know, I've been to the unemployment hearings. It is not a, it's not an employer-friendly environment. So, I was bringing this to the board for discussion and hopefully approval to get us involved with the service.
How many unemployment cases do we have in the year?
That varies, that varies.
Yeah, I'm sure it varies. All right, I'll ask it more pointed. How many have we had in the last year?
Packet of four or five in the last year. I can tell you what we've expended budget wise. It's more how much we pay out than... Did they receive, I have a packet if you want that.
So, we have five people on unemployment right now?
I don't think we have five right now.
Not necessarily right now. We've expended, we've expended so far today. I asked for a copy of the expenditures. Eighty-nine, twenty-two, seventeen. And we have a budget of thirty thousand dollars.
So, that's eighty-nine hundred?
Yes.
Just so...
Yes.
Okay.
Is that for one, two, this is for this fiscal year?
Yes.
And how many unemployment cases is that?
I, it's very difficult to tell from the paperwork that they, when you print it off.
Well, how many are we paying for? They do you for individual people.
They're not paying anyone.
They, they don't show a bill for individual people. They give you a lump sum.
But we have four or five former employees that are on unemployment.
I don't know, I believe that we paid for this past year.
And is that fiscal year?
Yes.
So, that's eighty-nine hundred this fiscal year.
I think it's two people now.
You think it's more than that?
No, I think we only have two right now.
Yeah, well, I'm saying since the beginning of fiscal year.
I don't know, but I heard that we had another name.
So, certainly, sixteen hundred versus, what, eighty-nine for this year?
No, no, we would still have to pay this.
Oh, yeah, unless they, unless they negated it.
Right.
That was the whole key, right?
Right.
Right.
I mean, we would still have to pay the eighty-nine hundred, plus an additional sixteen hundred on top of it.
Well, they claim they can save us money and perhaps appeal some of these claims.
Because right now...
And monitor in order to, they claim that we're being, some communities are billed for things that they shouldn't be billed for. And they go to the hearings for us, and they claim that they can negate some of the costs by avoiding unemployment compensation for whatever reason, if this isn't healed. Now, we don't hear anything at all. We filed an appeal at one, we still haven't heard.
We filed an appeal, but we haven't heard on the appeal? How often have we followed up on it?
All you can do is go online. I have a phone number. I've been on hold for as long as an hour, and no one's picked up.
What about our attorneys?
This is much cheaper than the attorneys.
I would think suggests that...
And the attorneys don't necessarily understand the system at this level.
Maybe it's worth it to try for a year and see how much money they saved us, if they saved their, if they saved their salaries, or if they saved the cost of the doing business well, then we're ahead of the game. Less BS in the town hall and they're handling the problems.
But I just...
What do you think?
I don't know, I'd say that's politically correct. I just feel like we put people in positions that should be handling this stuff and not looking for outside contractors to do the work for them. Was that politically correct?
Yeah.
That would be fine if you could get through. I attended a meeting a few months back, and I was left a message after hours telling me I needed to sign on to this particular site. They left me no phone number to call for an assistance of how to do this, what to do.
Really?
And when I, and when I went to the meeting, there was a meeting held a few months back at the library in Lakeville that I attended, and I raised my hand and I said, "Can anybody give me a phone number where I can contact these people?" And they all bust, they all, they all stopped laughing because no one can get through to have any questions answered regarding these claims. They're in such a dilemma there with the programs and the charges. They don't answer the phone. They don't answer the phone.
I'm just, I'll just speak from my side because I deal with unemployment because I have people that work for me in and out of, if school vacation, they can collect and things like that. And unemployment calls me, they ask for their pay periods, blah, 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 giving me information. I also have to write out a report for them, you know?
Well, maybe you can help me with that.
I don't, so, and they hound me. Did you finish yet? And a lot of it's online, and, you know, and a lot of it still is out of our control because we can't, it's hard to say, like, you're not entitled. It's not for us. It's for them to say you're entitled or not entitled. And I never want to be one of those people that say you're not entitled if you are and try to get out of something if we really should be paying. That's how I feel. But whatever the board decides.
I don't know if it's feasible to do right now, given the fact that we're coming to the end of fiscal year. How long is this individual that we're paying for? How many more months do they have?
It's four hundred dollars a quarter. It'll be four hundred and ten dollars to hire them for the next quarter.
Yeah, but this, they're already paying. They're not going to appeal the case now. They can't appeal the case now. How long have we been paying this individual?
They claimed, well, we've been paying for them since July. There's one claim, one's, one of them is a large claim.
Since last July?
Since past July, I believe. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, but their claim is going to run out. Their claim, they only have so much unemployment.
See, the point here is that we very rarely lay anybody off. I mean, it was more prevalent when we had the schools.
Yeah.
It's very rare that we lay somebody off. Very rare.
I would say if we were in a big budget crisis and we were laying people up, that might be something we would need. I just, I don't know. But leave me at a suggestion also.
However, I'm liking yours better.
Please, you don't have to.
The point, no, the point is, Paul's made a great point. How many people are we going to lay off next year?
Hopefully none.
None.
Or how many people will leave us and go to another job and do that job?
None, none. Towns are great employers.
See, that's the problem. I mean, you can't get away from that type of scenario.
You can't, you can't.
Because in this particular case, somebody left our employment, went to another employer, and then left that employer.
Right, so it goes back to your previous...
Couple of employers, in a certain amount of time. I mean, there's no way around it. That's the way the law is written.
It is.
I don't know, I, my personal feeling at this point is not to do anything with this. That's me. So, unless I hear a motion, I'm going to proceed. So unless I hear a motion, I'm going to proceed.
Okay.
Okay.
Move on.
We move on. We need to discuss the dates and the location of the annual town meeting, and we also need to set the time for when we start taking articles and the deadline for the articles for the special and the annual town meetings. So does anybody have any suggestions?
Well, by law says that the annual town meeting is the first Monday in June, so we can't really do anything about that. Special starts at seven, and annual starts at 7:30. And I think that, it's up to you guys, but I think Freetown Elementary School's fine. I don't think we need to have it in a panic with...
No, I, no, I think I like the elementary.
So I'll make a motion to buy by law, you know, we already have the dates. Special at seven, annual at 7:30 at Freetown Elementary.
Second.
Motion made in second. If they have Freetown Elementary on the first Monday in June, which is, Ali, what day?
Second.
June 2nd. Special town meeting at seven, annual town meeting at 7:30. All in favor?
Aye.
About where? In the auditorium.
Yeah, in the...
Yeah, where we usually have it.
Well, in the gymnasium.
Yep.
Yeah, gymnasium.
Special town meeting at seven?
Seven.
Seven, and the annual at 7:30.
Annual at 7:30.
All right. Now, what about the articles?
We can open them up tonight and have them due on April, what's that? April, yeah. Everybody knows they're coming. April, the Monday?
The Monday.
Seven. Seven.
So we're going to, we're going to start it today?
Yep, to April 7th.
March 24th to April 7th?
Mm-hmm. So I'll make a motion to open the warrant articles on tonight, March 24th, and they're due, no later than noon time on April 7th.
Second that.
Motion made in second. Open the articles for both the special and the annual town meeting, starting today, 3/24/14, and closing April 7th at noon time, April 7th, 2014. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's all done. Next thing is to award the bid for the furnace at the Hathaway Library.
Mr. Brown? The furnace at the library is failing. The director has indicated they're not able to do any additional repair. She's solicited quotations, and we're asking for an award in the amount of $6,526 to Wilkinson Oil Company.
Now, they had two, they had two bids here, right? One was for a straight furnace, and the other was straight furnace with the air conditioning unit.
Right, right.
The one you're recommending is the air conditioning and furnace, correct?
And furnace.
I agree with that.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Second with discussion.
Okay, let's have the discussion.
Well, in both cases, I just want to know that they're high efficiency oil rooms, so, you know, they're energy saving, so at some point there'll be an ROI on the cost of those.
Okay.
Okay.
That's, that's a good point.
Yes, thank you.
All right, motion made in second to award the bid to replace both the furnace and the air conditioning unit at the price of $6,526. To give to, who's the name of the company here?
Wilkinson.
Wilkinson Oil Company, 329 Rumba Avenue, Somerset. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that takes care of that.
Excuse me. Paul, could I just interrupt for something as far as the town meeting goes? The deadline for the articles is April 7th. That's the election date. I don't know if that makes any difference, if you would want it extended or...
So that's okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
The seventh, is the seventh going to be too much of a problem for you?
I'm only thinking about bylaw changes. I know I've got to work on the dog's bylaw, I was going to work on with Lisa, because we have to get that in compliance with that new law that was changed, the mass law. It all needs to be revamped. I haven't had a lot of time with the election and everything coming up, so it seems like it's not a lot of time, but...
Three, it's three weeks. Is that, is that...
It's two weeks.
Two weeks.
Oh, two weeks.
We'll go on one week.
I mean, I don't, if it's a few more days of maybe the Friday?
Yeah, we'll do the Friday.
What's the Friday, uh, early? April 12th?
Because we close at noon, so if you could cut off by noon on the Friday, is that all right?
No, we could make it Thursday by four.
Thursday by four?
Yeah.
Thursday by four? So what day is that?
On the 10th.
April 10th?
April 10th.
April 10th at four, so we'll have to modify that motion. So the motion is to accept articles starting today for the special and annual town meeting, and they have to be in by four o'clock Thursday, April 10th. Is that okay?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Is that okay, Jackie?
I think it'll work better. I don't know if Lawrence got some maybe bylaws or anything either, but for those who have bylaw changes and stuff, I think it'll work.
Now what? Let's see, what's next? Water health.
I'm healthy.
You're healthy? All right. Water health sure is healthy, so we can move on.
Personnel board. I've got a couple of things. One, submitted by the town administrator, Mr. Brown, to appoint Nadine Diamond, Nadine Diamond, as a floater effective 3/3/14.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Welcome aboard Nadine. The second was submitted by Chief Abbott, and it's a change of status for Detective Shane Kelly. It's a, as per contract increase, and it embraces educational increases and contractual increases. And his wages will go from $27 an hour to $33 an hour. All in favor of a motion to...
Make a motion to approve, as submitted by the police chief.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I'm healthy now, too.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. New business. Dates of the upcoming Board of Selectmen's meetings. We have one scheduled for March 31st, which is a week from tonight.
Lisa will be in town.
No, she's here on that one.
On that one, and then I think she's going, where are you on the 8th?
And then we have one scheduled for the day after the election, April 8th. Also, April 22nd. April 8th is a Tuesday, by the way. April 22nd is also a Tuesday. I believe there's a holiday on the 21st. May 5th and May 19th. Those are the currently scheduled meetings. There could be others as we be necessary.
Could I ask a question on new business here? My Dropbox has been down for over a week. And if we can't get that calendar in the Dropbox...
No, fixed. I fixed it today.
Oh, you did? I saw that one sitting, yeah.
All right.
Sitting next to the Whizkid here, she's got it all figured out already. That's good, thank you.
All right, now we're going to bypass the budget thing for a second because we're almost done with this whole process. Under old business, we have the outstanding, we have an outstanding debt owed by a former town employee. That debt has been turned over from the department to the treasurer's office to collect, and I guess, Diane, are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
No, we're not.
Okay, we'll hold on to it.
Okay. My recommendation on this thing here is to probably turn it over to our legal counsel to send a letter.
I agree.
Does anybody have any issue with that?
No.
Do we need a motion to do that, or?
Yeah, we should.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to have town council review and then forward a letter to the employee that owes us money.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next thing is the status of the police grievances, Richard?
I think we're getting close to getting that resolved.
Status of a...
Didn't we have a drop dead date for that? And we can't really talk about it, but didn't we have a drop dead date for that?
There was a delay on their part.
Okay.
But it's going to get resolved and along with what we discussed, so.
Okay.
Sue?
Yes.
Okay. Status of the town bond in a cushion that we're still working on, actually we...
Lauren, you're all set with that, right?
The town bond?
The town bonds, we can put that, you found those on GAS, didn't you?
The one that's missing in the cushion?
Yes, MassGAS has it all plotted out.
All right.
And we actually saw a guy in a cushion that lives right there, and he knows where it should be. In fact, he can show us where the broken part is, so, but we got to let it get warmer first.
Enjoy it.
And dry, and then we'll have to find the stone.
He says it's broken off a ground bubble. You know, where...
Perfect.
Paul, are you still working on the preambulation of the town on the Marcus?
I got two cold for the three of us.
Too cold and snowy.
The real truth is, it was too cold for John Ashley. He's our guide.
When they're completed, they have to be on file with the clerk.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to go back out in the spring.
We've only got four out of, I think, 13? Four out of 13 done?
Four, yeah.
There's four done.
And then we'll put them on G, Lauren will take care of it and put it on GPS, and then we'll know where they are from now on.
Well, the Mass General Law says they have to be on file, you know, written out and everything.
Yep, we'll do that.
So we'll just update our files.
Perfect.
Maybe the next time we go on hotback, it'll be easier. All right. Freetown Elementary lease, that's still pending.
Yes.
We've got to have a meeting.
Well, we'll talk, we'll talk to them when we see them on the 31st.
On the 31st. Replacement of the town hall floor and painting of the town hall downstairs hallway.
Yeah, we're going to do the painting when the weather warms up a little bit. We've gotten quotes for the town hall floor, and it's within the amount that you authorize me to proceed.
Perfect.
Okay.
I also have one for the police department for about $1,020, and I'd like to go ahead with that one, too.
To do what?
Replace some flooring over there.
I'm good with that. That's what we have the preventive maintenance budget for.
Is that in the officers' room? I hope.
Yeah.
Oh, thank God. Anything new on the South Main Street Bridge?
We're supposed to get a reinspection probably in around October.
Okay.
Just some discussion on that. Was, do you guys think that was accurate, $500,000 to a million dollars, did you?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, the number from DOT ranged a little higher depending.
Really?
Yeah.
So...
I was kind of surprised, because at one point we were talking about repointing underneath, and now it's up to a million bucks. Obviously, this is a lot more wrong with it than you think.
Right.
So, all right, I'm good.
Which means that we've got to take care of it sooner rather than later.
Absolutely, yeah.
Pond levels. Lisa was out taking pictures this week.
I saw them.
I sent the board the last report from the meeting that the building commissioner attended, and we're still monitoring them.
Okay.
Actually, they look okay right now.
They look okay, but I'm worried because...
We haven't hit March, well, we haven't hit March, but we haven't hit the...
Because when we start getting the warming trend, it hits back up again, so I just...
Especially with rain and if we're getting, does anyone know what the snow is coming?
Two to four inches.
Oh, okay. Two to...
Forty-eight, forty-eight inches.
So...
That'll be half an inch of water.
When the, when the ground starts to deep frost, we're going to be in trouble.
You'll have some problems.
Yep.
Okay. Current status of the water and sewer commission contract with Fall River. Good, we got guys here.
Get out.
We recently had a meeting, and we're waiting for response from environmental partners, and the attorneys are both there, Jonathan and Mark, and we're going to proceed from there, but there's been some dramatic changes in Fall River. We're hoping for some retirements over there, so a lot of things will change when people retire.
Hmm.
Okay.
That could be good news.
That could be.
All right.
Can we add two things to old business?
I got some here. Oh, yeah, we can add more, but I hadn't had some, something to thought, mine, over the weekend.
Okay.
Adjacent community status with Fall River, New Bedford, and Totten. As you read the paper, we got three places looking for a casino. Have we notified all these people?
Yes, we have.
All right, and can we take that one step further? Have we put together a list as a impacted community so we can forward that when, when necessary? And can you send, since Fall River is really in the midst of it more so, we already took care of Totten, but can we forward them a letter on behalf of the town of Freetown that as they move forward, we would like to be...
At their best.
Yeah, kept in the loop, and that we will be looking for some financial support.
We're still, did I?
Okay. Can you just forward that to us so I can read it, too? Thanks.
And there's been talk about an inter-municipal agreement with the city of Fall River.
You're looking on my notes.
No, I'm not. Listen, I've had this typed out. Have we seen anything?
I haven't seen anything. I called and have not gotten a response.
I know the last time, the last time we talked, they were in the midst of doing this casino thing, so that part of it, but to have them wait, to have us wait to get started on that is not a good idea. Like, if they have something on their desk, then I'd like to see what they have, or we would all like to see what's on their desk, so we can forward it up to our town attorneys for review, so.
Assuming we have okay weather, I should be seeing Ken on Wednesday morning.
Okay.
On another meeting.
Okay.
And just to make the board aware, you guys, I don't know if everybody knows you, probably know, Tommy Mellon, Tommy used to work for us a long time, but he's a custodian. He lives right down here on Slabbridge Road, and he's talked to me a number of times about a light that's in front of his house pointed over the street, and he's complaining that he's paying the bill on it. Well, I asked Richard to check on it, and I just want to make the board aware of it. Richard is checking on it to find out what the deal is, is that he may have made a contract, Tommy Mellon may have made a contract when they were going to take it out, and he wanted it left here. But it does face into the roadway, so Richard's following up on that. I wanted to make the board aware of that, okay? Because he's talked to me a couple of times. All right, any more old business?
Yeah, I have, and I, and I forgot to get it on, but I know I've talked to a couple of you. We had an issue, uh, with the requests for proposals during the, uh, space needs study for police and town hall.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the Attorney General has determined, uh, that we should have in fact posted on the, uh, central registry. Uh, we didn't do it, a way to cure this is to request our legislative delegation to introduce a bill, uh, ratifying the process that we did take, which was a competitive process.
Alright, did you talk to, uh, Carol or anybody?
Uh, no, I was gonna get permission from the board to go ahead and pursue that, and then I'll, uh, have Mark draft the language and talk to Carol and, uh, Paul and, uh, Mike Rogers.
Well, I mean, we have no other alternative unless we wanna stop this process altogether, so I'll make a motion to get that started.
Second. Okay, motion made to allow Richard to, uh, take the necessary steps to, um, get a, uh, some type of language from our attorney so that the legislature can pass a, uh, a bill regarding this matter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed?
No.
Is that it for, any, anybody else for old business?
Nope.
Okay, I have two things, uh, uh, to bring up on the new business, these, these things just occurred. Uh, gentleman, uh, that was here at the senior center, uh, talked to me, his name is Paul, we met, Fort Kevin Drive, and, um, he, uh, brought forth a problem that really, uh, this should go to, um, Chuck McCumber, and Chuck doesn't know, but I just found out about it. Apparently, down in front of this house, about a foot and a half, two feet off his, his prop, uh, into the roadway, there's a big frosty, and it's been there for quite some time, and what happens is when they plow, the, the plows run across the frosty, and it leaves the snow and ice, and, uh, I guess he's fallen a couple of times, and he just would like the town just to take a look at it, and if there's anything that can be done in the spring or the summer to get rid of that frosty, so it doesn't occur. So, it is Fort Kevin Drive, his name is Mr. Paul Womack, and I told him that I would bring it forth to the board and let Chuck know.
He called it a cross what ball?
Frosty.
Frosty.
Okay.
Frosty, okay. And the other issue, I don't know if the board knows about this, we just found out about this, uh, a custodian's pickup truck went in for service, and when they put it up on the frame, on the lift, the frame broke. And, uh, according to the highway department, while they had it up there, they tried to, uh, they tried to, uh, see if they could weld it, and it is so bad that there's no place to weld. Now, I know Richard's knows about this, and can you just fill the board in on what's going on?
Yeah, it's, um, it's failed, um, we are using an old vehicle from the, uh, from the highway department. Uh, the highway surveyor, um, is getting a, uh, a new vehicle that was in the capital improvement plan, so we'll be able to replace the vehicle without, uh, spending any additional funding.
The one that they're gonna use for, for the custodian is a nineteen ninety-two, right?
I thought it was a five, but-
Nineteen ninety-five, I know it's an old vehicle.
Yeah, it's an older vehicle, it seems to be in serviceable shape.
Okay. Go ahead. Want to say it? Do you want me to say it?
This is, this is like dear to my heart, right, Kev?
Yeah.
Yeah. When was the last inspection on the vehicle?
I think they're inspected annually.
Annually, but-
And no one picked up on, there was a problem?
It was a crack in the frame, so I don't know enough about cars to tell you whether that's something that you would see, but, uh-
Alright, well, alright, safety comes first, and, um, I just don't know if, if that, I mean, really, is that vehicle, the one he's using now, gonna be the right way to go, or should we just look into getting another used vehicle like we did with that one? That was what, ten thousand dollars about? Yeah.
You know, well, you got a new truck coming from capital expenditures, so there's gonna be a pickup truck available to be used around town.
No, that's the one.
No, that's the one.
That's the one.
You mean the one that Chuck's driving now?
No, 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 the one that, they, that, the, what's that kid that-
Chuck's getting another new pickup truck, so the one he's driving now will be available to use around town.
No, that's gonna replace the one that they give into the custodian.
Right.
That's gonna replace the one that they give into the custodian, right now.
Chuck's still gonna keep his truck.
Chuck keeps a truck.
And we're getting another truck just like the one Chuck has with a snowplow, well-set, four-wheel drive. The one he's driving now is going-
Yeah, that, 'cause it-
Is gonna be used by who?
It'll be used by the highway department, it'll be used by either John or one of his other people.
Right, right now, but that-
One second, you can just back, you can just back up. Right now, we've got one yellow pickup truck that Chuck drives, we don't have the other one, other than the small one, so we get a new one.
It, it stays in the highway department, and we take the vehicle that is better suited for the type of intermittent use that the custodian would use for it, rather than doing plowing and things like that.
So you're saying, were you suggesting, Lisa, that the one the custodian would be driving isn't safe?
Well, it's a nineteen ninety-two?
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five?
I think it's, I mean, Chuck's had his people driving, and I think it's a safe, I think it's a safe-
Isn't that the reason why, though, they want to get a new one, because they wanted to take one out of service? So now it's all right for one person to drive, it just isn't good enough for the highway to drive it.
But there's a difference between-
Like, hello, I mean, no, 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 no. I think we've all tried to make this clear, that we wanna do the right thing, right? We don't wanna nickel and dime, we don't want, look, we got a used vehicle for about ten thousand dollars, it was a nice truck, it got the job done, it wasn't a big thing, what, you know, it, it did what it had to do. I just don't wanna start nickel and dime, because in, in two years from now, we're gonna need, or, um, a year from now, we're gonna need another vehicle, and then the highway department's gonna want a better vehicle than the nineteen ninety-two or nineteen ninety-five that he's already driving, like they do now. That's my point.
That's a good point.
I'm just saying.
Did, did Chuck look into the possibility of getting, uh, a new pickup truck to replace the custodian's pickup?
No, that was a discussion that you and I had briefly, and I think it was, um, what was the dollar amount, twenty-two?
For a new one?
For a new, for a new pickup truck.
It would be seven thousand a year.
Right, I, I, I mean-
That's the money.
Yeah, right, now you're going from one extreme to the other, I, I, I'm just looking for a happy medium. And then that, that wouldn't be part of the highway department, that would be part of town hall. That would be the town hall, you know what I mean? For, 'cause the town, the custodian go, uh, you know, reports to the town administrator, so it would be there for that use. And if the building inspector had to go somewhere where she needed, you know, something along those lines, had to halt, that would be there for that use. I'm just saying, like, we don't take somebody's ill-fated vehicle and give it to the town custodian just 'cause it's saving money.
Should we, should we use the, uh, this old vehicle until, until we get something on the, uh-
Yeah, until we find something, but we went-
We gotta get it approved, right, on the town meeting.
I went online and found one, that's how we found the other one.
Somebody's got the handle, go ahead.
That someone-
How many miles on that truck, on that, uh, ninety-five, uh, G M, it's a Chevy or a G M C, it looks pretty good to me, I've seen it around.
I have no idea. Do you know, Kevin?
It's got a lot of miles on it, it's got a tough time passing inspection, the rust is, is really bad on it.
Well, you can't fix it now.
Right.
I'm talking about the one that collapsed.
The G M C, the Chevy that they wanna give him.
Oh, the, the Chevy?
Yeah, which, which one are we talking about?
The town highway, the highway.
We're talking about the orange one, not the one that they're driving, not the Dodge. The Dodge is the one that the frame split on it, isn't it?
No, that'd be a G M C, that's why I'm, that's why I'm moving here.
The gold G M C, is the one that had snapped.
That, exactly.
Right.
The older, and, and to your point, Lisa, and I don't wanna speak for the, the, um, highway surveyor, but I, I know in speaking to Mark and Chuck, that the older one, the nine, the ninety-five, ninety-two, they were looking to replace that, that's their shop truck, that's the one they used to run about town to get, you know, that where you don't need a one-ton and spend the extra money on one, gas on a one-ton. They were looking to replace that, so Chuck's existing truck is going to become the shop truck, Chuck's new truck will then become his work truck, and I, you know, if I can speak for Mark, I know he's hoping to get something a bit better and more reliable than a, you know, uh, that old shop truck.
He doesn't need a Cadillac, but he doesn't need somebody's-
No, and I don't, again, I don't wanna speak for either one of them, but I'm just trying to give, that's what I know.
I think if we can find a used truck, we should.
Yeah, we'd have to put it on the-
Yeah, let him use that one for the, for the next month, until we find something, and then-
You can also take their truck and put it up on a lift and make sure it's safe, in the meantime.
Right.
I know, I know those trucks will go over two hundred thousand miles, but nothing.
That would be, that would be my caveat.
Can we direct you to look for a used truck, in the meantime, thank you.
How do we pay for it?
We'll have to go to town meeting and-
No, we go to the finance committee.
There you go. I keep forgetting about those guys down there.
It's unforeseen, this didn't, just, you know, happened, we couldn't predict that a frame was gonna break, and we weren't gonna be able to fix it.
We have an article in the budget for that now, you have an article in there for-
For next year. For the next fiscal year.
Well, I wanna know more about that truck over there.
You will.
Drive right over to the highway department.
I will.
Okay, there you go, you'll find out all about it. Alright, so-
I guess on the line, it's just good that he wasn't driving the truck when it snapped like that.
Yeah, exactly.
As far as inspections go, when they inspect, they don't, they don't inspect, they inspect the front end, ball joints, and stuff like that when you go for a stick-up.
They don't look at the frame.
Not, not the old frame.
No, it probably would not have split, it split once they put it on the lift and it was hanging like this, that's when it split.
Yeah, that, that was the final straw.
That, that, that was, that was the bend that broke the camel's back, huh?
Yeah, that's it.
Alright. Alright, so that's what we're gonna do, right?
Yep.
Richard, you're in the, you're in the market for a car, for a truck. Alright. We got one more thing to-
I'll help you.
Uh-oh, she's gonna look for a Mercedes.
No, I'm not.
Alright, um, we have one thing before we get into, uh, you guys, it's gonna take us about-
Go ahead.
Five minutes.
It's gonna take us about five minutes, we're going to executive session to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, ought to collect, uh, ought to conduct collective bargaining session, uh, contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, hold the members, Mr. Baumgarten, yes, Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Sadik, yes, okay. Alright, those people that are here, does anybody want to leave quickly?
Lauren.
Lauren has to go.
If anybody wants to leave quickly, that would be-
Well, I know Lauren has a young child.
She does.
Alright, Lauren.
Can I go up to the table or?
Yeah.
Yeah, go on.
Whatever you want.
Right up to the hot seat.
Alright.
Move over so you don't, uh, so you have to move here. So you're in department number one seventy-five. So what do you end up doing, you have one job in the budget, correct?
Yeah, what is that, uh, office supplies?
Uh, no.
No, 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 no.
Sell them.
Okay.
Contractual obligations and every other, uh, cut the rest of the items, same budget, I think, discussed this week.
Whose contractual obligation is it for?
Mine. I'm the only of four.
Planning to pop this down, yes.
We're having issues with that. Everybody wants a beat-up one?
I do.
What? Sue?
No, I won't say.
I do have one request for submitting this, about the, the, uh, legal stipend, um, I would request maybe getting a little legal stipend, or any questions that come up for town council, bills come our way, um, and just taking some money that's allocated for printing, and just shifting it to that new. So taking money out of printing and putting it towards legal, yeah, from this stipend.
Yeah, but all, all, all legal goes through the, uh, the, anything has to go through the, the, uh, skeleton before-
It still does.
We, we have, uh-
We have a policy that, I mean, very, we're supposed to, we give out a policy, but it's supposed to be, that, um, when a department needs to call town council, they tell the town administrator that they're doing so, so we can keep-
A record.
A record on the county tonight.
Right, you mean, you didn't, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So maybe I don't, maybe I don't need it, but-
I thought they had to have permission before they can even call, this is, this is something that was out of, that was out of control before.
Yeah, it's still, it's in control, this was just allocating it to one of the cost generators, that's it.
It's not in control, if somebody has it in their budget and they can just call.
Why, why don't we need it in their budget?
We don't, we don't, she, she was just, Lauren just, no, Lauren was just making a suggestion that maybe it would be easier for her to do that, but-
It would be-
It's not necessary.
Not necessary, no, not necessary at all, because it, it comes under the whole umbrella of legal, that way you know.
Right, the, I, I mean, one of the other things we could do, but then it gets even more, too much micromanage, is to break down legal into departments, and that gets too much, you know what I mean, so as long as the department is talking to the administration-
We get the bills based on case, uh, so we know that.
Well, that's what, like you said that last time there, when, uh, it was out of control, we had huge legal fees.
We're still, we're probably have-
Yeah, but at least it's controlled here.
Yes.
Yeah. This is necessary, I mean-
Are you gonna say you know about it before it happens? Is that your control? There are some things that require expenditure funds-
Yeah.
That we do approve that get pricing.
Okay.
And we do not budget, for, for a community the size of Freetown, plus a Freetown, we have a bare-bones legal dilemma.
I mean, there's stuff that you just have to go to legal.
Yeah, I, I know, I feel like that, I, I just didn't know if it was something big that might come flying out of who knows where, suddenly something big, generally, you know ahead of time.
If we start looking towards getting into a compact agreement with Fall River, that's, that costs us money, things like that.
Alright, but some of that we get back to. Alright, I'm sorry, you want to say it with Lauren?
Yeah.
Back to what, Mount Vernon Street? Is that where it is? Your old neighborhood.
Okay.
I want five forty three, I'm dead.
That's my, that's my uncle's house.
You're on television, selling for operations, security of the home.
My uncle had tremendous fortune, everything he had back then, and ninety-five came through it. So-
Right.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You too, I say.
Who else is next? Anybody else?
Jackie?
Your ID.
I got a big one.
Distance to go to, or?
I, I got a big one now, I got a lot.
Yours will go three minutes.
Yours will go three minutes? Come on.
I want you to sit down.
Put the pot under you. What number, six hundred and six ten?
I don't know the number.
Six hundred and six ten.
Uh, four forty, I, it just says a four forty.
What?
Says four forty.
It's just one fifteen, four forty.
Quarter and sort of.
It's on the tab, six hundred and six ten, I think.
Yeah, that's the, yeah.
And it's at the end of your package. We're at the end, the last two tabs, six hundred and six ten.
Water and sewer fund, all the way back behind you.
That's weird.
Yeah, it is, it's here.
You don't watch, or it's not general fund?
Right.
Kevin's on a fantastic, he's managing the budget, we're right on track, and we're looking for a seven percent reduction in our sewer budget, and even level funding on, uh, our water budget, so we're really managing it pretty good, Kevin's on a great job. And, of course, some of it is, is trying to guess how much water is people gonna use, because we have to buy everything. We just recently had a, an issue on Chippewa Road where a guy funded eleven thousand dollars for water, because he kept that money, and filled up the cellar and everything else. We have no choice but to charge him part, I mean, we have to pay for it, we'd better win the bait it, so, unfortunately, some of those things that we're going to-
He never saw it filling up his cell.
Yes, we don't, man.
He lives in Maine, unfortunately.
Like a fight broke during the winter, something crazy, yeah.
And I noticed the, uh, not to get a truck, but I noticed an, on a ball reading, so I went and investigated in the basement, and I-
Yep.
Eleven thousand dollars?
Yeah, one and a half million gallons.
That's what Homer charged us for.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we had another one, six thousand dollars, yeah.
It happens, you know.
Usually rental property, who knows that?
Will his insurance cover that?
His insurance, yeah.
I have no questions.
Anywhere, any issues?
No.
Thank you. How much did you pay him to sell those?
I, I am amazed, every time he does, he's still on TV, I, I thank God that he does, but, um-
I only speak the truth, gentlemen.
Well, I, I appreciate that. Thanks, guys, have a great night.
Bye.
So you're doing the rest of the water commissions for me?
I will.
Kevin, say hi to your babe.
I will say hi.
You were talking just briefly about legal fees, is that offer still good, that we have to go into negotiations?
The offer, well, negotiating your part, part.
Right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Just don't go getting involved, I'll let him know.
Mike, just, you hear him?
Give me your pen back after.
Make sure I know what we're doing.
I'm sure, I'm sure I, I'm sure I found that somewhere.
As soon as I know you'll know, believe me.
I wanna know before you know.
Okay. I'll make it up.
One sixty-one, one sixty-four, one sixty-three. I'll start with one sixty-three, 'cause that's, these are the easier ones, that's the board of register. We have three elections scheduled for our fiscal year two thousand fifteen, with one annual town meeting, two special town meetings, so that's for the, um, final voter registration, um, I put in for a dollar increase on the rates for the registers, from eight seventy-five to nine seventy-five, um, postage winner. Um, I had told, um, I had mentioned to the finance committee that as far as elections and registers, I might be coming for a transfer, I'm not sure. As far as elections go, we had the special election for, um, David Sullivan, that was not figured into this year's budget. So it was only precinct one, we did get, uh, reimbursed somewhat from the state, but not everything, so I don't have the bills in yet, like, for the ballots and everything, well, I, I got one bill in for the ballots, but I still have the coding- but I still have the coding, I think, um, invoice to come in for this election to see if I'm going to be okay. And then the payroll, I don't know how many hours they're gonna put in, but it's gonna be within dollars if I make it. So where I can't take from the expenses that put to the payroll, where we, we voted separate lines, um, and I can't wait till May or June when the Board of Selectmen can make a transfer, so they would get paid, I might have to go for the transfer of that at that point. But I don't know right now, so I, I just let them know I might have to come back.
Isn't payroll something that you have to pay? She doesn't have to delay the payroll. No, we don't have to delay payroll, but we'd like to get it all straightened out.
But I, the thing is, I, I can't take from the expenses, well, unless I did it in May and June with you guys and I could do it that way.
Yeah, we can, we can look at it and talk to, uh, the town accountant, so we might be able to delay it a little bit.
All right. So the registers is the same thing. It would be within dollars, but I, I might be okay, so. Um, that's why I don't wanna ask for a transfer and then have to just turn it back in, so I'll wait till all the bills are in. Um, the elections, like I said, there is three elections on the elections budget and I did put in for an increase on the wardens, clerks and inspectors. Those are few different rates. Um, so I put in a dollar increase on each one of them. Now, next year, um, I don't know if the selectmen have heard, there is a big election reform that's gonna be done by the state. Um, it's already passed and, and the state reps, it's gone to the senate, they changed it, it's going back to the state reps. They want early voting, which means my polls will have to be open ten days before the election with the polling places open. I don't know how this is gonna work because our polling place is at the school.
Right.
Which means we would have to utilize the gym for the ten days before. Now, they're saying it can be done at the town halls, but it can't be done at our town hall. We don't even got enough parking space for the employees, never mind for people coming into early vote at the town clerk's office. So it, it's something we might have to address right now. Like I said, it's going back and forth.
How many days before?
Ten days. I will have to work weekends to.
What are these people thinking?
Well, see, in the other states, a lot of the other states do have early voting, but it's very different. In the other states, it's done by county, not by towns and city clerk's offices. It's done by counties. So it's a county office that just does elections. They don't do other things like town and city clerk's offices do. So it's, it's very different in the other states, but they wanna try and pull in more voters, as many voters as they can, and they think that this will increase voter turnout. Studies show that it will not increase voter turnout, but it's something that they.
You've got a whole day to, to turn out, so I mean.
And the thing is, they have absentee ballots for people, which that is.
I mean, this is gonna, this is gonna, this is gonna cost us a fortune.
Yeah, and, and that's gonna be.
We has a, we has a question.
I'm sorry.
Why would you have to work weekends?
Because it's gonna be the full ten days before the election.
Including weekends?
Yeah, including the Saturday and Sunday.
Are they gonna vote on weekends?
People can.
Are they gonna fund it?
Uh, there is sometimes they'll vote on Saturdays.
No, that's a deal, that's right. Is this in one of these non-funded mandates?
Yes, yeah, right now it is.
Just won't do it.
Well, the clerks have been in contact with their state reps. I've been in contact with, with Carol Fiola and, and our state reps and, and sending things, you know, of, of concern. And of course, the funding is, is the main concern.
Have you heard of books?
I haven't read one.
No.
I didn't know how, yeah, I didn't know how it worked.
Yeah, if you talk to the senators.
The only way we could probably do here is put some office trailers up there.
You, well, it's not that easy. When you go and change a polling place, there's a whole procedure that's gonna be done ahead of time, notification and everything too, so.
Well, you could do it in a parking lot like here, but you, you, they use this building in the daytime, so the only way I could see that we could do it, every building we have is used for multi-purpose. So you'd have to put some trailers out there.
Like I said, we're still in the early stages. They're talking about absentee voting without an excuse.
Yes.
Which then my postage is gonna go sky high, because everybody's gonna say, hey, yeah, send me a ballot, I'm gonna vote and come to my own home.
I think we should stop voting online.
If, if this comes to fruition, we've got a reserve fund to cover these expenses if we're forced to do it, right?
I'm just, I'm just giving warning that this election budget is, is, if it's going the way they're talking and the senate is totally for it, um, it looks like it's gonna be increased, so I'm just letting you know for now. This is what I've got based on the way elections are run right now, um, so that would.
Is there an appeal that we can take?
You can get ahold of your reps and your, and, and the senate. That's, right now, like I said, I think it's back in the House of Representatives. They're trying to do an election task force, which includes town and city clerks and, and anybody and everybody involved in elections. So they're, they're still working on it. The, the state reps were only saying to do it for state elections, which would have, wouldn't be too bad. The senate wants it for all elections, even local elections, which is totally ridiculous.
That's ridiculous.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's ridiculous.
Have they filed a fiscal impact statement is when they introduced the legislation?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. If you, like I said, if you talk to Carol Fiola, um, or even Senator Roderick, they probably could give you more information than I could on what we're finding out.
Let them finance it.
So that is my election and my registers budgets based on, like I said, the way we're running elections right now. Um, I don't know if you have any questions on either one of those before I go to the town clerk one.
No.
I don't.
Okay. My town clerk one, I did put in an, an amendment telling you that I didn't add in sixty-five dollars because I didn't include, um, the increase in the, uh, the union there. I forgot, there was one period and it was a, the half a percent. That's supposed to be from January to June. I forgot to include that. So that was gonna be an additional sixty-five. I have one more amendment that I noticed. Um, when I was talking to you today about longevity and stuff, there was, I noticed that I put in the seven hundred longevity for Diane for that year. Well, she won't be here in that year because she's retiring at the end of the year. So that seven hundred dollars in the longevity could come out and whoever comes in, they wanna be longevity. So it's plus sixty-five dollars, minus seven hundred. So the total, I believe, comes to, um, ninety-two thousand, five hundred thirteen.
So are you making those adjustments now?
Yeah.
Okay, so you, what is longevity gonna be equal to?
The longevity would just be mine, which would be four twenty-five. Diane's was seven hundred, so that'll be taken out.
Okay, and you're gonna add sixty-five where?
And sixty-five's gonna be added to the salaries, um, because there's a half a percent in the union.
So that's gonna be seventy-three, thirty-eight, zero, seven, three?
Uh, yes, yes. And so the total should come out, I believe, to eighty-eight, six ninety-three. If I remember that correctly, I kinda did it.
Personal expenses, you mean, eighty-eight, six ninety-three?
Yeah. Did I do that right?
They're gonna check it over anyway.
Yeah, if, if, if I add it wrong, I apologize. I, I did something here and I had done it wrong and then I was just doing it again. So I think the total, like I said, is ninety-two, five thirteen. And if that's off, it's not off by much. Like I said, I don't have my calculator. Here, I was just doing it, scribbling by hand and when I noticed it. Now, if there's any, um, difference done on the longevity, the article was put in to change the rates for non-union and elected personnel, that's not in the budget, so. And the article usually doesn't fund the budget, so we would have to put that difference in. And I am going to, I put in for a two percent increase. I usually try and stay with union. And I just want to state one more time, like I have in the past, that the salary of the town clerk for a town our size is low and it has been for a long time. We had increased it a little while back because it was almost off by ten thousand for a, a town our size and it is still behind about five thousand dollars. I try and keep up with the union's negotiations, but if at some point the selectmen wanted to support increase in that, I wanna be against it. But I put in, like I said, with the rates of the increase of the, um, the unions. Um, that's, that's all I have to state. There isn't anything else. Um, when my clerk does retire my assistant town clerk, my intention is not to hire assistant town clerk unless it would be somebody that's experienced in the town clerk's office. Because her responsibilities according to Mass General are, is, are in fact the same as the town clerk. She has the same responsibilities and penalties and everything else, so they better know the work in that office. It took me three years to working under Jenny to have an idea of what goes on in that office and I was still afraid I didn't know everything, especially with elections and everything else. So I would like to start somebody off as a senior clerk, like I did with Diane, after they've been there for two, three years. Hopefully, we could appoint them to assistant town clerk. And at the point where I'm ready for retirement, this person could take over from my position.
Sounds like that's not happening for a long time.
Well, if I'm sixty, I still got a few years to go.
You're sixty?
Yeah, so I still got a few years to go.
I never would've guessed.
No, I wouldn't have figured that, but.
No, thank you, thank you. So I still got a few years.
Clean living, though, see, they pay attention.
Too late for him now.
Clean living.
I, I, you know.
What are you trying to tell us, Lee, now?
So, listen, I, I think that, and I would hope that the Board of Selectmen, uh, looks at the, uh, pay skills on the elected officials and those people that are on the personnel bylaw to keep them in pace with, uh, union contracts. That's.
Okay, you can't say that, because we can't tie it to a contract. That's why I'm not saying.
I'm not trying to tie it to a contract. You know what? Look, I, I'll let Lisa phrase it the proper way, because she's good.
No, we'll just look at all, at all, right, non-union personnel.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody's got any questions on the town clerk budget.
No.
Okay, then that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any idea, we're gonna know about this election deal, a ten-day thing?
Well, like I said, it's, it's back and forth and.
All right, yeah.
When they, they introduce special legislation.
When they decide to do it, it's gonna come down, yeah.
Going back and forth, so, um, we're trying to keep on top of it. We even have lobbyists in, the Mass Town Clerks Association even has a lobbyist that's in there trying to.
Put it to bed.
I mean, the town clerks know how an election works and everything.
Yeah.
Some of the people up there, sometimes at Boston, don't know and they don't take everything into consideration. So we're trying to.
Would you, would you have a lot of, maybe someday I'll learn how to be politically correct.
Did you have a lot of, do, one thing there was that dues and membership there, or in-state travel or something, what was the?
Which one?
A hundred and fifteen percent expended?
Dues and memberships.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's over by forty-five bucks.
Oh, yeah, forty-five dollars.
And you went down.
And you know what I think happened is that might, what happens is it used to all be the meetings and seminars all used to be together with that and now there's a new line for that and I might have still put it in dues and membership instead of the meetings and seminars. The meetings and training seminars, um, it sounds like a lot of money and stuff, but that's for my schooling for a week when I go away for school too.
Yeah.
So, and, um, sometimes I haven't been doing, um, a whole week. I just do a couple of days instead if I see my budget shot so I can use the money for the supplies and stuff that I need instead.
So now you can't transfer it?
Well, no, I can because it's in that expenses. The only thing that I can't transfer is payroll. Payroll is separate from expenses. But any of the other separate lines in there, you can kinda transfer around, so it's not, that's not too bad.
Okay, all right, see, I wasn't sure of that. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
And your calculations, your totals were correct.
Okay, thanks. Like I said, I kinda scribbled. Thank you.
All right, next one. Last, but not least, the tax collector and the.
You got, excuse me, don't forget her. She's got a meeting going on, so they had inspections this weekend, so she said she might not get it till a little after eight.
Who?
Karen. Mellow.
She might be coming another day.
Why don't you just text that daughter?
I don't know. Do you know how to get a hold of her?
Karen?
Yeah.
I can try calling her when I go out. I'll call her at the hall.
Yeah, would you, just tell her, yeah, don't come.
Not to come, we scheduled.
No, it's too late for her.
Yeah, we don't want her to drive over.
All right, I'll call.
Tell her we'll catch her another, I mean, I looked at her budget before, it didn't look like anything I would like. Yeah.
All right.
Before I came to the meeting.
Where, where are we now?
We're at one forty-five.
Why am I coughing?
Why are all you coughing?
We all did the same thing.
We wanna, we wanna give you some of that brown. Look at her.
No, thank you.
I'm not coughing.
If you spend any more time with him, you will be.
What happens at the COA stays at the COA.
Don't chew. You gotta throw that out, you know.
Alec, put me away.
The camera's still working.
Is the camera working?
Yeah, there's just no voice, right?
We don't know.
We don't know.
I'm gonna be out.
Where are we?
We're at one forty-five, Diane.
Right.
So yours, Diane?
Well, I basically leveled up the, except for contractual obligations on the salary ones. The clerical is supposed to be a, a negative percentage, because that went down from last year's. And the other one, um, the assisted salary is up by nine percent, we've been able to look that several times myself, through the financial people and the town council, and that is what it is.
You know, it's interesting, I read the, I went back and I read the contract. And, you know, would you have, go to early retirement? And the way it reads. Makes no sense. Zero. The way they calculate it doesn't make sense as to how they, as to how it's, how it reads, in my opinion. But it is what it is. Well, it doesn't matter because apparently we've been doing it this way for, uh, instead of, the way I read it, it says the person gets the five percent jump on their base pay the first year, five percent jump on their base pay the second year. So, you know, after the adjustment for the contract, so I would say if your base pay is twenty-two dollars this base, you grab five percent to it for this year. And then when the contract jumps to next year, let's say you're twenty-two dollars and fifty cents, you add five percent to it that way, but that isn't how it's being done. They, they jump five percent this year and then they add another five percent on the five percent increase, so it becomes a nine percent increase. Jeez. But that's how it's interpreted. But anyway, my.
So when, what is her last day? February fourteenth, two, top two thousand and sixteen, sixteen.
People you know get a raise like that so they can retire. The only people that get that in real life is if the position's gonna be gone, they retire.
Is there a?
It's an incentive to leave.
Right.
Not here.
Is there a way to break that out of that? Maybe just put like on a salary line, just make.
It's wrong, it's wrong.
Retirement incentive.
I asked Janice.
You did?
And I don't recall how we're gonna do it.
So it doesn't, you know why I'm asking?
Yeah, yeah, she thought it was a good idea.
Are you gonna buy mine all of a sudden?
No, you s.
I know, that's one of my things.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
You're saying so it doesn't get into the next. So it doesn't come up as a base for the following year's. Oh, yeah, you can break it off. It's easy to break it off.
Yeah, that's, well, I was. I know we break it out on some.
Yeah, we break it out on the, uh, we did it on the, uh, sickly buyback, remember?
Yes, and we did it on police when Walter was leaving too.
Okay.
Yeah, but, um, oh, she's already here. Oh, no, she's not here.
She's not answering, so she must be on her way.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, if we could break it out, it would be so much easier then. We won't get lost.
Did you put in a contract, did you have contractual increase in yours? There's a, your car tax is an increase?
Two percent.
Two percent this, for this year?
Mm-hmm. Thank you, two percent.
Thank you, two percent. So, that's just, I just changed the, yeah, within the lines with needed, and I will do it.
So, the only increase in here is just contractual?
The contract called two percent this year's file, is your contract called two or five?
You know what, I heard you, you know, with the town clerk, I know our association does a survey on the, of salaries by town, by population, by office, personal students, they do a survey, and they're, so I could try to, yeah.
Please wait. Please wait, your base pay is sixty dollars now, right? Is that what it is?
Uh, we, uh, I started at sixty-two.
How could she have sixty in the original budget?
Because that's what she, that's what.
That was the original budget.
Ah, okay, so you're, you're paying what now?
No, sixty, I think it was sixty-two.
Ah, well, I'll go back and get it, that's why it's off.
Yes.
In fact, I have it quite far.
And there might need to be some adjustment at town level, because, although, although Janice said it looked okay, but we wouldn't be, because, because the clerical was less, losing less in quality. Yes, because one that, at December thirty-first, I believe this was, was, like, the collective was fifty, collective treasurer was expended fifty-one, but the clerical was only expended at forty-two, because Cheryl's salary, we see the clerk's salary at a lower rate than we obviously have previous, so it's gonna be kind of a wash. I think there might even be a surplus though.
Cheryl's salary is thirty-four.
No, no.
I don't know, I miss it, forty-five percent?
Yes.
That's a very great.
That was, that was.
So, so, for next year would be about twenty-eight, nine? Twenty-eight, nine, twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine, three, twenty-two, thirty-six. So, between the, the adjustment between the two just comes out to almost what I am saying, so.
Yeah, you, you start off at sixty-one, nine, that's right, so sixty-one, yeah, I guess, so it's pretty, now, of course. Sixty-three, one, thirty-eight?
I did this a while ago, so who knows?
We do have one question, are we ready to go on?
Yep.
One fifty-eight, which is the tax title for closure. You know, it says professional technical legal fees, does that include advertising? Because I have to take title, advertising is a big part, is that, that usually has been expended, the advertising fees?
Yes.
I don't know what, I know it's expensive today, I know we're way, way behind in tax title, but I guess if I need extra money, if I get caught up, I'll have to revisit that, because we still have to take two thousand eleven, twelve, and thirteen, because that is it. On the outside, two thousand, there are still some in two thousand eleven, twelve, and thirteen, and then we have to go back, I just took one, just did a subsequent two thousand and six, and I'm going to have to go back and disclaim some in two thousand and nine, and we take those. All right, but now you're telling us, so it's not gonna be unforeseen, so I would recommend increasing that budget.
I'm not saying that I'm gonna be able to do it all.
Right.
In the next year.
Right.
You know what I mean, I, I don't know yet.
But if you don't use it, it's gonna come back anyway, so even if we made that seventy-five
I even have to find out where they advertise for this town, I'm sure, I'm sure Janice has got someone, you know, where you advertise, but we, because you want to go cheap.
Now, you're talking on the tax, tax title?
Tax title, yeah.
Tax title for closure, yeah. And I've had to call, I've had to call Mr. Probold a couple of times whether he's gonna bill me or not, I don't know, I might get stuck on my hand. I've called him a couple of times.
You've got sixty-five hundred here on, on both of the.
I may, I'm going to try to do some before the end of this fiscal year, but I don't think that's gonna work.
That, she was right, it's the bottom line, sixty-five hundred is a lot of dollars.
Okay.
That's what it was, the, so.
But she's saying she's behind, and she's trying to catch up, so if she can, she's gonna need more money, but I'd rather.
Pull her over, and she kept herself.
Right, rather give it to her now, because if she doesn't use it, she doesn't use it, it's not on the finance committee, or, you know what I mean?
Well, if it's on.
It's not on fourteen, she knows, she knows it's there, whether she's gonna get to it or not.
So, how much do you want, you want to add something?
I'd say a thousand.
Add a thousand, seventy-five hundred?
What?
It's okay with me.
All right, and, and if I, if I don't start it, this money's not gonna be utilized. It's not, right, it's not gonna go anywhere, but rather than holding up a process, we're just trying to tell you.
Trying to save you a trip, man, you're here. Are you here, you're here?
You're here, we'll go for it.
Hi, okay?
Yeah, hiya.
Yeah.
One day.
How are you, me?
One day.
That's the answer, right?
That's the answer. The other one is the debt.
What account number are you on?
Seven-ten and seven-fifty-one, which is the debt, and the interest on the long-term And that's taken right off there, the debt schedule, we need that for, for the free town elementary and the flood. And for a few things.
I can treat down the line, just one off.
Well, we refund yet, so I know they.
What?
We refund yet, so. We refund yet, they were supposed to be saving a hundred forty, they now don't, in a year.
Yeah, but we, a yearly payment went up, we refinanced, went up by fifteen.
Well, I think there was an offset in the debt, where there was a.
Am I looking at the right line here, it's seven-ten?
Seven-ten.
Last year was four hundred and sixty dollars, and now it's five-ten?
Uh, I think, well, I think that.
Unless they decrease the period, we have to pay it back, I mean, maybe that's, I think we finance that, unless you're on a year.
Yeah, finance for less than a year.
You know, bait, and you remember that from finance, and that's, and that saves you two hundred thousand dollars in interest for the term, you know?
Increase the payment.
Yeah, it says, in my notes, it says, no, you're close.
You're close?
Yeah, close. A ten, we have a ten-year obligation, and we should save about a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars over that ten-year.
So, what we did was we cut back on the, on the time.
The remarks, they had a lot of interest.
Great, and we'll cut back on.
So, try a lot of time, so, so your mom goes up each month.
So, it's here, five, five fifteen thirteen to seven fifteen twenty-three. And with the principal balance salary in, in May of six million three hundred and thirty-one
Plus three is that, nine?
I think two percent.
Are we still, we're still looking at seven-ten? Where are you going now?
Oh, I, I don't know, are you done? Seven-fifty-one, we're both, that was both the debt, seven-ten and seven-fifty-one is the debt, you know, interest on the long-term debt.
So, the, the interest has gone down. Right, from two forty-seven, to two forty-eight, to one nineteen.
Where do, where do you see that?
Seven fifty-one.
Seven fifty-one.
Janice, on the flood went up? Is that what I'm reading here on the seven fifty-one?
Yeah, the, the elementary went from two thirty-nine to one oh, no, two thirty-nine to one oh-seven.
Right.
And then it looks like the.
The flood went from eighty-eight or whatever up to twelve.
Up to twelve, yeah, plus thirty-seven.
Yeah, well, I think that's because we went to permanent financing.
Yeah, yeah. Because we were just rolling over the rates before.
That's right, absolutely. Yeah, so in essence, we, you dropped a considerable amount of money there.
Yeah. I'm getting thirty thousand, twenty thousand.
That's it?
Nine thirteen on the climate compensation, left with a thirty thousand. We've only expended, I believe I said. Yeah, I think we can drop that now, it's funny. We spent eighty-nine, yeah.
Yeah, we're up, we're even, we're up.
Everything else, yeah, we spent the eighty-nine as a, I think we can drop the count, it's one.
I agree, okay.
I don't know why you think, I think that the ten, the ten grand in there hasn't hurt a thing, we could take it out of there and have it in free cash, and everyone's gonna want it.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can use it.
We can take it out in, you could put it in.
Oh, it would have stabilization.
What's the thing?
No, I can touch it.
What did you want, did you want oil or something?
This is a ten grand, remember you were talking about oil?
I wanted a fund for sustainability, so, for rooms you, you can use very discretionately, and, 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 but I had talked about just so you guys, you know, here. Early on, I was in this building, meaning for something, and I was asked to take a phone call, and it was a seventy-five-year-old woman, one being on the other end, and I feel, and I feel. So, those aren't the kind of phone calls you like to take, but I could see Barbara was extremely upset with me, because in the history of this organization, the COA, there are places they can go for funding for oil, one was called Joe, who spent such gold, and he was, the state had expended all money out of here. And even though there are people who donated to the COA specifically for fuel, and resources like that, cash, that's like the final gas that, that had been pretty much expended.
It was basically not enough.
It had gone down to the policeman's unit, and from time to time, they'd ride a hundred gallons of oil. So, at that particular point, you have a choice to make, you can either bring them into the COA and pay someone a dime and a half to stay there, or what has happened in the past is Barbara Place has taken them to her house, put them in her bed, she sleeps in her bed, that's not really fair to the hierarchy of COA, but she's done it. So, my feelings were to earmark five thousand dollars for the COA budget, can be used only for fuel oil systems, no more than a hundred gallons, only when they've extended.
Everything else.
Everything else, and there was nowhere to go, and at the discretion, she would have to get the approval of the selectmen, letting them know what was going on, to buy a hundred gallons, and the reason it's a hundred gallons, that's at least a lot of the, to get those people over there, because this is not a shelter, it's not set up to be shit, you know, so, and I felt the five thousand bucks, if we spend it, good, if we don't, it goes back into the general fund, so we had talked about, and that's, that's what that's, so, it was intended to survive.
Well, in the scheme of things, in the whole town budget, my feeling, I would go along with you on that, and I can't say for the rest of the board, but I, I think that money's spent more foolishly sometimes other ways, so I, I would say that's a good, that would be a good cause.
We could get to the COA budget, we could talk about it again.
So, we're gonna take twenty, ten hours?
I still don't know if it's legal, so that's the only question, using taxpayer money to pay people's oil, so it gets a little questionable, so we're gonna have to find a way. Do they have a friends, a friends account? Yeah, people can sign up on their tax bills and donate to the senior, and we also are part of Citizens for Citizens, which has money available, but that, that's another discussion.
That's a fine one, and I'm thinking that, and last winter, and this place was full of people, one of the feet, and that was taxpayers, we were buying pizza, and it was like that, the same.
Yeah, that was sharing the place, it was a state of emergency, and they get their money back from the state for that.
Not, yeah, okay.
No, no, I'm just, I just want to make sure whatever we do.
We do it right.
Is the right.
Yeah, it's gonna be done right.
I just don't want to be in that position again, like, okay.
Well, I'm in favor, like I said, I'm in favor of trying something like that, you know? If it'll work, fine.
In a case like this, we can always keep it to mind, and then find out if it's legal later.
You could, you can, I don't know if you necessarily put it in their budget, but you could do a warrant article, and then have the town come to decide on that, instead of doing it in their budget, you could put it as a warrant.
So, let's put a warrant up, I'm sure, we'll talk about that for the town's.
I don't think it would look good if they found somebody a pot sitter in their house, because they, an elderly seventy-five-year-old woman that, you know, pleaded for fuel, and nobody gave it to her.
But it could be, you know, like we donate money to the women's shelter, could be sort of like. Okay, back to you.
We're gonna drop this to twenty grand, right?
Yeah.
Is that what we're gonna do?
I've got it over here for twenty.
If you want to keep it twenty-five, I just feel like it's.
Twenty.
Twenty's good.
Lee, how does that program, I mean, as far as say somebody runs broader, and.
We'd say, well, it's discretion, you know, you give the money there for emergency need.
Okay.
Nine thirteen.
I'm just saying, not exclusively oil, but.
Don't you get into the details?
All right.
But, it's, you can touch it directly.
So, they can get her her oil?
They did, they did, there was music, and I have to report Barbara before it should get a bill.
So, if you're gonna put in an article, yeah, it has to be written up, so it can.
Have the COA do it.
Have the COA do it, so it can be in with the time stamp.
Run through the COA, but you have to, only has to approve.
Well, somebody has to approve it, if you found an issue.
I mean, not just Barbara, but she does the preliminary, and it goes to you.
Well, yeah, only because you have to make sure that Barbara can.
Right, I know those people say they're.
I wouldn't want anyone to do that, I would just leave them, I, I, you know what, because then it becomes, just.
Then you're getting calls at three in the morning, wanting to get your oil.
Yeah, why not me, how come, I'm cold, dah dah dah, nope, I don't, nope.
Okay.
You, you, Barbara, you deal with that.
Yeah, 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 I'm picking that up.
She hid money in her mattress, I know how she has money in her, you know what I mean, I don't want to know.
Oh, I've heard, I've heard some of the stories up here, oh, people, you can't get this benefit if somebody else can, because.
Right, yeah, that's the part that I don't want to, keep, keep an arms distance.
Damn old people, over sixty.
Us old fogies, I know. Yeah, you're still younger than me, you know. I figure if Barbara has any questions, I'm gonna write the article, she can check.
Well, writing the article is the easy part, it's the implementation, it's more confusing.
Well, what's the criteria?
I'm sure she has a good handle, she's been around here a long time.
All right, where are we? All right, where are we?
Nine fourteen, health insurance. At the time that I did this, my, the ladies from mine that I deal with suggested that they hadn't gone to the advisory board yet. So, they had me budget seven percent. Okay. Now, Richard, what were you telling me earlier about something else has to be in there? You said five point seven, but you didn't yet consider something else.
We have a five point seven, but we also have to factor in the amount that we recover from the employee contribution as well as the pneumatics amount. So, we just don't know what this final number is tonight.
Pneumatics amount, what was the other thing you said?
Employee.
There's an employee share.
Okay, you're not sure what that's going to be?
Right.
And when are you going to be sure?
After we run the numbers. Well, by the time we begin, we'll have.
Yeah, it's going to be reduced.
Yeah. I hope it's reduced.
Well, yeah, you got to, you got to factor out, factor out the employee share.
Yes.
And then there's going to be a.
But right now, the budget that Lynn, or Lynn Jill showed us was about a one point five premium. And we're showing one point two six in this budget. So, that's one point two plus the amount of the employee premium. So, I just want to make sure that we, we get the right total amount.
And then there, you also have the retirees.
That was the medics.
That's the medics.
Okay. Yeah.
Medicare, because Medicare was a separate one.
Well, you have something, uh, where's the medics in here? Medics is higher than line item?
That would be part of the premiums, yes.
Okay. And health insurance stipend is that, that's for people that do not take the health insurance.
Nine fifteen, life insurance. The budget is based on what we had expended this year. Already. I don't know if it was over last year because they reached on budget. It was only two thirty.
I know, yeah.
Eighty-eight percent.
I didn't see what.
Something. But that's what I based it on.
And again, some of these are new line items, so it could have been in something else. So, I'd guess we know about that.
Based on twelve thirty, I mean, you might want to buck that up to a thousand.
Twelve thirty?
Yeah, December thirty-first expenditures.
Oh.
For six months. Spent over four.
So, you might want to change that to a thousand. Want to do that?
And last but not least is Medicare. And I, I took that down by five thousand, but I don't know if we should rethink that. If and when we, because I, I'm still waiting until July first to come around to find out how much the, we're moving people over into that new plan. But there's also going to be a penalty involved that we haven't had to.
Tell the board. Tell the board.
Well, we got an opinion from council, town council, that we have approximately between spouse and former employees, we roughly have sixteen people who will be going from active plans to Medicare. Some of them might already be on Medicare, but there's a penalty for every year that they should have gone and didn't. There's one in particular that goes back for thirteen years. And this wasn't entirely an oversight by, you know, predecessors. They've been changing this law so many times now that a lot of people didn't know, they, they don't even know how, how this is supposed to work. But anyway, by auditing the policies, we determined that we have at least sixteen people who we could have possibly, according to town council, pay a penalty for. Now, the informationation of that is also going to be difficult because these people are paying the penalty out of their social security. So, we're going to have to establish a way and somehow align to reimburse them for this penalty that they're paying. Because if you do not catch the, the retiree at, within three months before or after they turn sixty-five and have them go over to this plan, I'm right, have them go over to this plan, the town is responsible for the penalty. Now, what we did do, and we used the same terminology on all of them, we had everybody comply. We had every single one come in. And we filled out the form for them to go through an appeal process to try to get a waiver on this penalty.
But you, you need to tell the board that, that they're, I don't think the board understands what you're talking about because you fill out appeals so they can appeal to the, the social security.
Correct. Yeah, so, 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 and social security imposes this penalty for those people who didn't go on Medicare when they were supposed to.
So, they're still on regular insurance?
Correct. And, and it could have happened, the oldest one that we have is thirteen years. Anything that happens within three to six months, no penalty. Three months before they retire, before they return, turn sixty-five.
Now, are they collecting social security? Were they collecting it and still on?
See, the thing is, even though someone works for the town, and this wasn't always the case either, they can now piggyback on their spouses. And I don't know when this occurred.
Well, they can also collect their own too, if they work long enough hours.
But, but that's very difficult to do because you have to put so many quarters in. It's thirty quarters in and then you get penalized on your social security, two-thirds of what you're getting, but it's.
You're talking to somebody that's in that category.
Okay.
So, I, you know.
You've been through.
So, I guess the bottom line here is we have some financial responsibility because the town didn't catch it.
And we don't know what that is. We have not heard from all the appeals that we have filed.
These people are getting.
We have not gotten, see, the response is going to go to them because it's really, we did it for them and had them sign it, but it's really them that was, were applying for the appeal.
You do that at the ball town meeting.
Okay.
Can I step back for a second? What happened was you had people, the town has always had a policy that if you are entitled to Medicare through either yourself or you cover under social security or a spouse, when you retire and you turn sixty-five, you have to apply for Medicare. Okay? You can be over sixty-five and still working for the town and still be covered under your regular health insurance through the town. But once you retire, social security gives you three months to apply if you're outside of the regular, the, the, the regular initial enrollment period, which is three months after you stop working and have, have coverage. So, what's happened is that they called, when they went through to do everything, to clean out and get our records correct, they found people that were entitled to Medicare that didn't apply for Medicare and they were on our health insurance when they shouldn't have been. They were retired.
I don't understand, Paul, how this, because when I retired from the city of New Bedford, you know, I mean, they were on me like a new suit.
Because there was nobody on them like a new suit here. Because if they didn't tell you, how would you know that they were entitled to Medicare? Because we never took out Medicare until after nineteen eighty-six on new hires. That's when the law changed. But some of these people had been around before that and never had any Medicare taken out.
I guess the thing is, we'll have a financial obligation here, but we don't know what it's going to be.
Right, so my suggestion is to wait till the ball town meeting.
We also have to figure out a way to implement how these people are going to be reimbursed.
That's why you need to pay the bucks.
But what, are we really obligated? Our town council has people obligated to cover this?
Yes.
We have a ruling from them in writing?
Yes.
I haven't seen the ruling. I thought we, I thought this was built into the premiums.
It is, but part of the, part of the premium includes that penalty.
Look, you're talking about social security. If somebody doesn't sign up for social security within that period of time, they're charged a penalty for each month that they didn't sign up.
Right.
That's a social.
Hundred percent per year.
That's a social security penalty that's added on to the individual's monthly charge for Medicare part D. Okay?
I'll tell you this, if they're collecting, this is something you're going to find out. If they're collecting any partial of their social security payment, they were told that they had to go on Medicare. They had, because when you go into the social security office, you, you got to, you got to file for, if you file for your social security, you know you've got to pay Medicare. Because they take my Medicare.
You can, you can take, you can argue that all you want. The opinion was, and it says in the law, if the town didn't do diligence and, and go and.
If they're not, if they're not collecting, no.
If the town did not see that these people went on Medicare when they were supposed to, it's the town's obligation to pay the penalty. That was the determination.
By our town council.
Yes.
Let's find out from them because I'm sure they run across this in other towns.
Yeah.
The process for dealing with it.
Yeah. It's easy.
Uh, deal with it.
Yeah.
Because we, we are, we're going to have, we have to reimburse them the penalty amount each month.
What are we talking, ballpark figure?
We have, you know, we, we started to put together a schedule. But until we, we, because these people aren't going to start until July. So, we don't have a determination until they're going to tell us how much they have to pay. We haven't received no response from anyone as to what their penalty is going to be or whether they're appealed. You know, nothing, no response whatsoever from any single one of them. And, but they're, they're supposed to be starting as of July one.
What was the rationale? When you filled out, you helped them fill out the appeals paper, the social security appeal. What was the rationale you used for social security to, to make that adjustment?
Well, we had a source that we had.
They had a social security source.
Yes.
And it wasn't wholesale.
No, it was not. It was, it was someone who volunteered to try to help us with the wording. And we, we made the wording the same, you know, we were advised on how to word the appeal to get the fastest possible outcome. But so far, we have, but this, this outcome was going to come to the, this outcome was going to the Medicare insured, not to us. Because it was, it has to be done as though they're filing the appeal, even though we would be the one that wouldn't have to pay a penalty if in fact they were granted a waiver.
Do you know, these people, do they know that they, that they need to tell you when you, when they get the letter?
Yes. Yes, we sat down with each and every, either individual or spouse.
And you know that sooner or later, these people are going to be compensated for, somebody else is going to pay for their mistake. Why would you say, all right, we're going to figure it?
We had one case.
Go back to the guys with the deepest pockets.
Well, when I was a manager in, in, in New Bedford, we had a case of a teacher, a professor from UMass Dartmoor that was in the same boat. And we, we had her appealing. And she actually won the appeal. And it was because the, uh, the state forced people into doing this after the fact, after they had already turned sixty-five and they were already retired and they were already covered under the state health insurance.
Oh, I get it, yeah.
And because it was, the state changed the rules and forced these people into it. They were forced into the, to the, to get a, a, a penalty. And actually, social security waived when this individual waived it. We had one person that put it in and she, and she actually won. She's still, she's still living. She was in her eighties now.
So, we, we may not do anything until you get more information.
Right. We had every, we had more than one come to us and said they were never told they had to file. But they could stay on the plan that they were on.
That's their story.
And they stick to it.
Yeah.
But they know where we are now.
If they went to, that's a crock because our policy, if you look at all the people that have filed, retired, they knew that, um, they, they, they. The truth, some people hid it from the town that they, that they had coverage. You know that as well as I do.
Well, some people didn't realize that if they, even if they were no longer married and their husbands or ex hus, estranged husbands had social security, they could still piggyback.
The truth, although interesting, you know, they are what they are.
It's been, it's been quite an experience.
I wasn't talking about that particular case.
It's, it's been quite.
That's the one I was just thinking of, Paul.
Yeah, it's been quite an experience because there's so many different facets to it. And the more we dug, the more, you know, not just the, just, not just the employee. Some of it is the spouse of the employee. So, it gets really tangled in.
The truth is interesting, but not really relevant anymore.
That is what it is. But yes, we did get legal and after they came back.
What's up next?
So, you're going to, you'll get that legal opinion.
I think so. Am I done?
Yes.
I think so.
And then the opinion that I've seen says that we have a responsibility. But beyond that, how it works and, you know, I haven't seen that explained. And that's, well, I got it.
That's.
That's the crux of it.
Okay.
Thank you. Safe to drive home.
Thank you.
Where's your phone? It looks like it's hanging out of you.
Thank you.
See you later, Diane.
Yep. Okay, Karen, your last.
Thank you, Karen. You a week?
Yeah, barely, barely.
Me too.
Okay, mine's kind of simple.
One forty-one.
One forty-one.
One forty-one.
It's a very simple one, too.
Oh, is it forty?
It's freezing.
Yes.
Cool, cool. Turn the heat up. The temperature's falling outside. You know, we can't spend a lot of money on, uh, on gas.
No, that's why we never have a, that's why the means were changed from here to the elementary school. Because the elementary school was heated already and air-conditioned already, and we don't want to put a burden on the COA. That's why we're cutting budgets like crazy. That's why.
This is more cozy.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying.
At least I can hear you in here. In there, I can't hear you.
What? Come on, Karen, let's go somewhere. Get out of here.
Okay, so, I don't know what your format has been this year, this week.
Same thing.
So, my total budget is eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two. My salaries portion, seventy-three thousand, three seventy-two. The only increases in salary are the half percent. And a half percent?
Half a percent and one, and a one and a half percent after July, January.
Right. The assessors' salary is unchanged. The longevity is unchanged. Karen is part-time, thirteen hours a week.
That hasn't changed, right?
That hasn't changed.
Okay.
None of my lenders have raised their prices, with the exception of, and the only special or collective.
They're afraid to take you on, so that's.
They are. No, actually, because I, I write wonderful letters and say how good they are. They, they get lots of stuff.
What year are we in on the contract?
Uh, this is the second year. We are in re-bow this year.
Okay, so when do you go out to contract again?
Not until after summer next year.
Okay. All right, I'm excited.
Yes, we are in the middle of our cyclical inspection program. We have seen, um, it's been good this year. It's been good. We've gotten growth because people do what people do. They make changes to their properties. Some don't believe they need to pay a payment.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
We have people that have cranberry box in town.
Yep.
And they're, the last crop is not cranberries, it's solar panels. What's the difference in taxes on acres of solar panels versus an acre of cranberries?
The land is going to go out at the full and fair commercial value. It's not going to go as, as cranberry at all. So, so it stops that discount they get for agricultural use. Now, it turns to a rollback when they do come out.
Is that only the portion that they use though, for the solar panels, if they still got cranberries?
Unfortunately, no. Who, who's got cranberries? Oh, only the one on Chase Road is still. Yeah, they pulled thirty-three, thirty-three, thirty-five acres out.
They paid commercial.
That portion will be commercial value. The remainder, so long as they still conduct an agricultural business, will be value. And we still get a chance to capture that if they decide to put in more cranberry box.
It's empty.
So the cyclical program's been working good, we've been picking up growth. I still get people who call me up and say, do I have to let the assessor in? Well, the answer is no, but I have to try to get in. And well, what happens if I don't? We get to estimate, we don't wanna take a chance that we'll estimate high because if you do, you're gonna have to apply for abatement, then we've gotta come in anyway. And that's all we wanted from the beginning. So a lot of minutes, it's been good.
Did you hear that?
Nobody closed their books, they didn't even wanna ask me questions.
It's been good. First apartment, it's been good.
Which we put light bash, gonna collect more money this year, that's why. I know.
I am.
Growth.
Karen, how does she drive me?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
We will see you tomorrow.
Bye, Karen.
Thank you.
I must have the wrong contract on that one. It doesn't show any increase.
I looked at it, it's two.
I must have the wrong one then.
Yeah, I don't know which one you have, I'll find it.
Why did she have to contract?
Well, no, I think I have, I noticed we had, there were some pencilman changes.
You might have had one what we were working on as opposed to.
Working on it, yeah, that's what I have, so.
It's on my, it's on my documents at the office.
Just send it to me.
I think we started negotiating with sixty, but then I've given her sixty-two.
You were always talking about, oh.
You and you want to adjourn by?
All right, motion to adjourn.
So, me.
Hall of famer?
Aye, 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 aye.